Good morning, everyone. The meeting of the Louisiana State University Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Dr. Kane, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damm?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Shaw? Mr. Temple? Ms. Warner? Mr. Williams? Mr. Zuzlaw. You do not have a quorum yet.
Madam Chair, if we do not have a committee of, a quorum of the board, but we do have a quorum of the Academic Affairs Committee, we could actually convene committee meetings. It's up to the chair.
And, and we could also begin with the presentations without a quorum.
Today's invocation will be given by Bettina Toots, SGA President, who is LSU E majoring in Psychology, and the pledge will be given by Trayton O'Connor, Radiologic Technology Dean. Everybody, please rise.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Lord, as we gather today, we ask that you will be in our midst to guide our voices to speak the truth, and, and our hearts and minds to listen openly. We are here today to discuss topics that will move our thriving LSU community forward, come and take center stage, and give us the wisdom to discuss new ideas and perspectives to be able to stand head and shoulders above all. Please bless our chair, board members, and all others participating today with the guidance to make this meeting a productive one and remove any distractions. We start with you and we will end with you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Everybody would like to turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to give a small bio. I'd like to introduce by saying good morning. My name is Trayton O'Connor. I'm a 2018 graduate, Mamu High School. I'm currently a student at LSU E, majoring Radiologic Technology. The ultimate goal of practicing is diagnostic radiologist. During my time at LSU E, I realized the opportunity to grow was much more abundant than other colleges I have attended. For example, at my previous college, I received minimal financial support and limited hands-on opportunity to work with patients. While attending LSU E, I have been accepted to the Radiologic Technology Program, awarded the Macyboro Memorial Scholarship, elected Vice Chairman of LSU TE Student Advisory Council, elected President of LSU E's Pre-Professional Health Majors Association, given the opportunity to speak with Dr. and Senator Bill Cassidy. Although not related to LSU E directly, but with numerous encouraging and helpful words from LSU E staff, I have completed an online EKG certification while in the RadTech program. And finally, at my previous college, I was only able to get ten hours in the hospital setting. Over here at LSU E, with one more semester before graduating, I've completed over nine hundred hours in clinic. These clinical hours, working with doctors, techs, patients, and real-life patients, let me put an emphasis on that, has teaching me priceless, priceless lessons. Having these lessons made me, made available to me, I'm going to close with an immeasurable thank you to LSU E and the LSU E staff. Keep up the hard work. I really appreciate what you all have done for me.
Thank you so much, Trayton. At this time, we need to call roll. Dr. Kane, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damm?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Zuzlaw. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you, Bettina, for that beautiful invocation. At this time, I'd like to recognize LSU E Chancellor Nancy Sorensen for some special presentations.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I just would like to express on behalf of LSU E and the people that are here, what a delight it is to host the LSU Board of Supervisors meeting. When the campus learned that we would be the site of the meeting on December ninth, I can say without equivocation that there has been a buzz of excitement since then. And I, I believe that what you see here is the result of many months of work and planning. I would also like to recognize perhaps some of the staff that worked behind the scenes so diligently to make this campus a beautiful place. And in particular, our grounds crew, who have been working over the past two weeks to ensure that the grass is perfect, the flower beds are perfect, there's new mulch in the beds, and as well as the beautiful poinsettias that you see on the outside. So they, they have their heart and soul into this place. Just as Trayton was able to give a bio, I would like to ask Bettina Trumps, could you come forward, Bettina, and give us a little bit of information about yourself, and then we'll go on to the rest of the program.
Hello. My name's Bettina. My full name's Bettina Jade Trumps. I was born and raised in Crowley, Louisiana. I'm currently twenty years old in my sophomore year here at LSU E. I'm currently living in Roberts Cove, which is a short drive away. As a Crowley High student in high school, I was very involved. I served four years in FFA, I played two years of softball, two years of volleyball, two years in student council, and one year in cheerleading, all while balancing a job. A little background of myself is that I am adopted, growing up not knowing why my bi- bi- biological family gave me up for adoption, made me push myself that much harder to be the most successful person I can be. My foster parents, Mark and Vanessa, made me who I am today with their decision to take me in and treat me as their own. After twenty years, they can successfully say that they wrote, they raised a woman that is moving mountains to reach her goals. At LSU E, I am currently majoring in General Studies and will continue my education at LSU next fall, where I will be majoring in Psychology with minors in Business and Sociology. Over the past two years, I have had the opportunity to serve as manager for the Lady Bengals softball team, and I am currently the Miss LSU E and Student Government President. I am still holding down a really good job and just bought my second house in Baton Rouge for when I go to LSU next fall. I am very pleased to have the privilege to serve this very special college as student body president and Miss LSU E, and it is my goal to strive for greatness in everything I do, and I hope today is very productive for everyone, and thank everyone for being here.
Thank you, Bettina. Thank you, Trayton. You guys are amazing. We appreciate you sharing with us today.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to recognize the many members of the community that are here, that reside in, in the Eunice area. We have members of our Campus Board of Supervisors, our foundation, and LSU E alumni here with us today. So thank you so much for being with us today. Today, we have a very special presentation for you. I would like to introduce Mr. Dwight Jodan. Dwight is a local composer. He is the co-founder of the Eunice Community Concert Band and Choir, now in its thirty-second year, with his co-founder, Ms. Pat Dossman, and he's a registered agent and representative of New York Life Insurance here in Eunice. He has served on the LSU E Executive Committee of the Campus Board, and he's a past president. But the gift that he is giving us, ladies and gentlemen, is that after fifty-five years, Dwight is an incredibly talented composer and lyricist. He was the, the drum major at, at ULL when he was there. He is a talented singer, but he has written and composed the LSU E Alma-Matter and Fight Song, which we are going to play today for you, and I'm going to have Dwight come up here. The interesting thing, or one of the wonderful, unique things about this, is that it was recorded in collaboration with the LSU Wind Ensemble and Dr. Damon Tally. So this is really an historic moment for us and for Mr. Jodan, and Dwight, could you join us, please?
First of all, it's an honor to have you here in unison. Just so you know, we do not take this campus for granted. It is a blessing to have, have the campus here, and it's been a privilege to serve in, in various roles through the years, and just as a fan. So, Dr. Tate, Mrs. Jones, and board, we welcome you. Just as you create opportunities, one of my favorite words is opportunity, and I think you can do three things with, with opportunity. You can take advantage of it, obviously. You can pass it by, but the third one is the most fun, and that's to create opportunity. And that's what this system does, and that's what we're hoping to do in, in setting this in place. We're part of a moment. The origin of the Fight Song and Alma-Matter was in 2006, the baseball team won its first national championship. And as we were planning to receive the team back, Coach Willis and the guys were coming back from Tennessee, we realized we needed to do a welcome reception, and we had no school songs. We had "We Are the Champions" to get off of the bus, but, and so we cobbled together a Fight Song at that time, worked on it through the years, and in the last couple of years, finished it up. It was an honor to meet Dr. Bio and have Dr. Tally record it with the Wind Ensemble. So that's the short version of a very long story, but I think it's, the school is well-deserved to have it, we, or the Bengals, although we're a part of the LSU system, we have a unique athletic program, as you all well know. Dr. Tate, I have a framed version of the Alma-Matter for you. It's signed by Dr. Tally and Dr. Bio and, and everyone who was involved that day. So I'd like to gift that to you when we're finished. So I think we're going to listen to them?
Yes.
And hope you enjoy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. IX, and I would like to introduce three female student athletes to you who will speak briefly about the impact that being a student athlete has, having on their lives, and how they plan to use this advantage to achieve their academic and career goals. We have an athlete from each of our sports. We have women's basketball, softball, and women's soccer here. So I would first like to ask Vanessa Dewey, who is representing women's basketball. She is a sophomore from Lacusene High School in Fenton, Louisiana. Vanessa?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Vanessa Dewey. This is my second year attending LSU E as a women's basketball player. Being that Title IX has given not only myself, but other women athletes the past fifty years the right to an equal opportunity in sports and educational institutions to receive the federal funds to be able to participate in these activities, or unentitled, that receive federal financial assistance that women did not have access to before. I think the implementation of Title IX is very important because it helps bridge, bridges a gap of equality, no matter the sex. I have Title IX to thank for the opportunity I received to play sports throughout a young age and to be able to follow that passion into college. The Title IX means that I get to practice and compete at the highest level, and I don't have to feel like my sport is, means any less. I have been provided with several opportunities to grow as a leader and to find my voice in being a college athlete. Title IX is so valuable that it protects the integrity and meaning of education and sports for girls who unfortunately are still fighting for equality, equality in both. No girl should feel she can't pursue an opportunity simply because she's a girl. No girl should miss out on the, on learning the lessons that are best taught by sports. These are the reasons I believe Title IX is something worth celebrating and continuing to fighting for. Thank you.
Chloe Bennett is on the women's softball team. She is a sophomore from Rose Pine High School in Rose Pine, Louisiana. Chloe?
Good morning, and welcome to the Cajun Prairie. My name is Chloe Bennett, and I am a softball pitcher in my second year here at LSU Eunice. I was given the privilege to talk to you today about Title IX and how it has impacted my life. This is the fifty-year anniversary of Title IX. I started playing softball when I was seven years old with the goal to play college softball someday. If it was not for Title IX, I would not have been able to fulfill my dreams in playing college softball. If I had to give my talk a title today, it would simply be Title IX: Empowering Women for Fifty Years. Title IX protects people from discrimination based on sex and education programs or activities that receive federal financial assistance. So how did Title IX help me? In the pre- Also, I have been privileged enough to meet some great female student athletes. It amazes me how, if it had not been for soccer, then I would not have met them. The girls on the team have always had each other's backs, even if it's just making sure we're on time to training or taking the time to chew to each other in subjects we're struggling in. Soccer and school have for me gone hand in hand. Many schools learned on the field have translated into the classroom and vice versa. Being able to work towards my degree, play the sport I love, experience new things, and meet new people is a reason I enjoy being a student athlete. So, I think it's important that female student athletes get the same opportunities as male athletes, as we all deserve to be able to develop ourselves academically as well as in our sport. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jasmine. And finally, LSUE and the LSU College of Ag are going to sign an articulation agreement. And I'd like to ask my colleague, Dr. Matt Lee, to come up.
Excellent. Thank you, Chancellor. Good morning, everybody. The Chancellor and I are very pleased to announce that as we seek to increase the educational opportunities for students in the agricultural space, we're going to sign two articulation agreements that will allow students interested in either animal sciences or in agribusiness to seamlessly transfer, once they finish their AS degree here at Eunice, to the LSU College of Agriculture. There is a dire need, particularly in rural Louisiana, for large animal vets, and so the animal sciences one in particular is going to be an opportunity to help ensure that we are giving students the opportunities to study in this space. And also, a little bit later, I'll tell you about some other agreements we have in another space, which will complement what we're doing here today. So, I want to thank the Chancellor for her leadership on this, and I very much look forward to giving these opportunities to our students.
Mr. President, did you have a comment that you wanted to make about? Thank you all very much for this opportunity to talk a little bit about LSUE, the value that we bring to the region, and the value that we bring to our system. It is a real honor to be in this position, to represent LSUE and to be a leader in our system. We are the flagship system of the state, and it's wonderful to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. I was going to say this during my report, but I did not know if the students would still be here. And so, I really wanted to commend the students who spoke today. This is the first campus I've visited when I became president of LSU, and I've always had a special praise in my heart for LSUE. It is distinctly important in our system, and the students who spoke really represent what this is all about. I also like to say to the students, athletes who came up to represent the Title IX, you're part of what could be argued the most important bit of legislation that came about in terms of opportunity in this country. I would say this as a former, my first job out of college was as a part of the job was as a girls' basketball and track coach, and it was the most important experience in my life. I told everyone, I do not believe I would have been president of LSU if I had not had that experience. It was the most important leadership experience I ever had. I really didn't totally understand what I was getting into, but those young ladies really helped me understand what it means to be a leader. And subsequently, and I want to say this to you all, and I was really moved by the young lady who talked about being adopted. One of the most important experiences I've had in my life was coaching my daughter in volleyball and in basketball. I tried to get her to do track. She said no. And in softball. And to this day, we are able to talk to one another in a language that's uniquely linked to sports, that I think I would not have had absent the Title IX investment. And so, I just really want to commend you all for representing this very well, and thank you for your remarks.
Thank you, Chancellor Sorenson, for giving us the opportunity to hear from the band and to learn about these amazing students and their experiences at LSU. We appreciate those very heartwarming, heartfelt stories that you share. Also, thank you to Mr. Jordan for those beautiful arrangements. All right. I know that we have one person signed up for public comment, Representative Philip Devillier. If you would please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, President Tate, Chancellor Sorenson. I want to thank all of you all for being here today. Mary? Secretary Robinson? We used to battle back and forth at the Capitol all the time. She's taught me a lot. I want to thank you all for coming to Eunice today, visiting District 41. It's a great place to be. Hearing the comments this morning really and truthfully made me reflect on a lot of things in life. And given a few minutes, I'd like to share some things with you all. I graduated from St. Edmund in 1995, which is right here in Eunice, and I dreamed of going to college. When I walked onto this campus, it was just surreal to see my grandfather's name on Manuel Hall. And today, I think last year, we named this building after my wife's grandfather. And I realized very quickly the privilege that I was given to go to college. But I'll tell you, if it wasn't for LSUE, I would have never been able to make it. This place has given me a foundation to make it through college, and quite honestly, it's given me the upper hand in life. Walking into this room this morning, I saw one of my professors, and I'm sure he's thinking, God, I really didn't think that guy was ever going to make it. I remember being elected in 2015. I started serving in 2016, driving to the Capitol, and I had tears in my eyes, just like, there's no way we're going to be able to make it. That was some tough times. So, any of you all that can remember 2016 and 17, it was a difficult time to be in politics. I can remember visiting, coming to campus and visiting with Coach Willis and him sharing a vision of what he had for our athletic department. And when you think about where we started when it comes to athletics, he was there from day one, and I think he has seven national championships now. Phenomenal, phenomenal. And I'll tell you that he didn't just build a program. The men and women that go through our athletics department, they're prepared for life, which is just amazing. And now, we have a vision of a new facility, and I want to thank you all for being a part of that. And our Chancellor also has just an unbelievable vision for what we want to do with the science building and the new STEAM Center. So, that's just something I look forward to working with you all in the very near future, to see both of those come to fruition. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for what you do to sacrifice being a part of LSU. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Devillier. We appreciate you and all that you do for LSU. Dr. Kane, are there any others registered for public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Unless there is an objection, a move that will recess for committee meetings. Hearing no objections, the Board is in recess. Supervisor Warner, please convene the Research and Agricultural Extension Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Kane, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much. I'd like to begin by inviting our interim Vice President for Agriculture and the Dean of College of Agriculture, Matt Lee, to introduce today's presentation.
Thank you, Supervisor Warner. LSU Agriculture remains laser-focused on its mission to become the premier research, extension, and educational agricultural program in the country. To that end, we have with us today Dr. Kurt Guidry. Dr. Guidry is both the Regional Director for LSU Agriculture, as well as the Director of the Rice Research Station. The Rice Research Station in Crowley, Louisiana, is the premier rice research station in the country and likely the premier rice research station in the world. It is an asset that we are very proud of, and it's one of the many assets that we are going to continue to leverage as we work on our march towards national leadership on this front. So, please join me in welcoming Dr. Kurt Guidry.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you, Board, Dr. Tate, for giving us the opportunity to come in and visit with you a little bit about the Rice Research Station. I think we have a presentation.
You can look at it in your packets right now.
So, the Rice Research Station was established in 1907. It was a collaborative effort between USDA, the LSU Agricultural Experiment Station, and local community, given the importance of rice and rice production in the area. And over those years, it's grown really a significant reputation for doing excellent high-quality research and extension to our stakeholders. That really does make an impact, a positive impact, and adds value to the rice industry, not only here in Louisiana, but quite frankly, around the US and around the world. As the name would indicate, its primary focus is in rice production. Our biggest program is in variety development, developing that next rice variety that our producers can use and implement into their operation. But it also does research in all the other aspects related to rice production, whether it be related to fertility, disease management, pest management. And in addition to that, we also do some research there in relation to rotational crops. How do other crops fit in with rice into a holistic crop enterprise for our producers? And again, the importance of crawfish production. We do some crawfish research and demonstration work there at the research station. And then, finally, our last biggest project is in foundation seed production. All the varieties that we develop, we produce foundation seed that is then distributed to seed producers throughout the state to make that seed available to producers to implement into their operation. The rice industry is a $300 million to $400 million a year farm gate value, so we are supporting a significant industry in our state. And then, the crawfish industry is a over $200 million farm gate value industry, and that's one that has continued to grow. So, the importance of providing research and extension information to our crawfish producers is extremely, extremely important. We're located about 20 minutes south of here. We have 700, a little over 700 acres of what we call our main farm, where the majority of our research is conducted. And we have another little over 300 acres of what we call our south farm, which is where most of our weed science, rotational crop work, and crawfish research is done on that smaller farm. As I mentioned, the breeding program is our biggest program. We use traditional breeding methods. Our breeders use traditional breeding methods. But over the last seven to 10 years, we brought in molecular marker-assisted breeding to enhance and make our breeding program much more effective. And then, in August of this year, we hired a quantitative geneticist to come in and to bring in genomic prediction modeling to also help our breeding program. So, really and truly, as Dr. Lee mentioned, we feel we are the premier research station for rice in the United States and one of the premier research stations around the world. The stuff what we're doing with molecular marker-assisted breeding and now with genomic prediction modeling is, no one else in the United States, in terms of rice, is doing that type of work. And so, we feel very privileged to be able to be innovators in that space. We do inbred and hybrid variety development. We also do long grain and medium grain variety development, and we have basically three major components. Conventional rice, which is the rice that was grown 20, 30 years ago. Then, we have herbicide-resistant rice, which allows producers to apply herbicide over the rice without it impacting the rice and just focusing on the weeds. And then, we have several specialty variety development varieties, whether it be aromatic, whether it be low-glycemic, high-protein rice, that we're also putting out there for our producers to use. In part of the breeding program, we do include disease resistance, so we're using that molecular marker information to put in markers into our varieties that will make those varieties resistant to certain diseases, therefore reducing the amount of chemicals that we have to use and helping our producers be much more sustainable and profitable over time. In addition to our breeding program, we have agronomy, we have entomology. All of these programs are very, very important. Each time we develop a new variety, we also have to provide information on what's the best management practices for growing that particular variety. And so, we do research in agronomy to figure out fertility requirements for these new varieties, planting dates, planting populations for these new varieties. All of these, so when we release a variety, we're also releasing a management package with those varieties as well. We also do water management and usage, and we do a lot of research in greenhouse gas emissions and trying to reduce methane production from rice production. Entomology looks at controlling insects and insect management, insect resistance and new invasive insects that impact the rice industry. Pathology, our disease control and disease management. Weed science, which again is done on our south farm, is predominantly looking at weed control and weed control strategies for our producers, as well as having a direct hand, excuse me, in these herbicide-resistant varieties and making sure that we have an optimal management package for those varieties. And as I mentioned, we have a foundation seed program. If you go by the station at any one day, the vast majority of acres that you'll see in production are in foundation seed production. We sell that. We have collaborative agreements with different companies and different entities that we produce this seed for, that then turns around and gets expanded and is made available to producers, not only in this state, but throughout the country. If you look at our breeding program, we've had 61 varieties released to date, with three more scheduled to be released over the next couple of years. And you can see here, since the beginning of 2000, the amount of varieties and the number of varieties that we're releasing per year has increased. Part of that is because of the molecular marker assistance that was brought into the program, and then I think we all think that we're going to see even an increased advancement once we get this genetic, quantitative genetic program up and running and operating in the way that we all think it will. Again, if you look at the next slide, which is a breakdown of- varieties, planting dates, planting populations for these new varieties. All of these, so when we release a variety, we're also releasing a management package with those varieties as well. We also do water management and usage, and we do a lot of research in greenhouse gas emissions and trying to reduce methane production from rice production. Entomology looks at controlling insects and insect management, insect resistance, and new invasive insects that impact the rice industry. Pathology, our disease control and disease management. Weed science, which again is done on our south farm, is predominantly looking at weed control and weed control strategies for our producers, as well as having a direct hand, excuse me, in these herbicide-resistant varieties and making sure that we have an optimal management package for those varieties. And as I mentioned, we have a foundation seed program. If you go by the station at any one day, the vast majority of acres that you'll see in production are in foundation seed production. We sell that. We have collaborative agreements with different companies and different entities that we produce this seed for that then turns around and gets expanded and is made available to producers, not only in this state, but throughout the country. If you look at our breeding program, we've had 61 varieties released to date with three more scheduled to be released over the next couple of years. And you can see here, since the beginning of 2000, the amount of varieties and the number of varieties that we're releasing per year has increased. Part of that is because of the molecular marker assistance that was brought into the program. And then I think we all think that we're going to see even an increased advancement once we get this genetic, quantitative genetic program up and running and operating in the way that we all think it will. Again, if you look at the next slide, which is a breakdown of variety types, and again, you can see 64 varieties, and you can see majority of our varieties are in long grain. That's the majority of the rice that is produced here in Louisiana. And so we focus our breeding program to meet the needs and the wants of our stakeholders. We have an extremely, extremely strong relationship with the stakeholders, with the Louisiana rice industry. Our faculty have a strong relationship with the industry and do quite a bit of collaborative work there. If you look at the next slide is the percent of acres in rice in Louisiana that are produced, that are in production to LSU Ag Center Rice Research Station-developed varieties. You can see there in the early 2000s, we were 80% to 90% of the acres were growing varieties produced here at the Rice Research Station. That has cut tail down a little bit, and the reason is not because we're doing a poor job. The reason is that we've had hybrid rice varieties that have been introduced into the industry. Those are predominantly from one privately-owned company. We haven't done a whole bunch of hybrid rice variety development, but here over the last five or six years, we're building that program. And so we hopeful in the next several years that we'll have, we'll be competitive in that space as well and provide additional opportunities for our producers to not only have inbred varieties, but hybrid varieties as well. But even to that point, prior to that private industry coming in and providing those varieties, as you can see there, 80%, 90%, we were really extremely competitive against other public universities or public breeding entities throughout the country in terms of providing the varieties that provided the most economic impact for our producers and for the rice industry. The next couple of slides just kind of highlight some of our faculty members that are at the station. The first is our breeding program. Dr. Adam Famosa is our head rice breeder. Dr. Famosa is probably the premier rice breeder in this country. He is extremely sought after by collaborators, companies to work with him, given his knowledge and his expertise. And he does a tremendous job in coordinating all the breeding efforts at the Rice Research Station. The rest of them, Dr. Brijesh Angura works in our molecular marker lab. Dr. Rock Roberto Neto is our new quantitative geneticist. Again, he just started in August and provides a great opportunity in terms of advancing our program. Dr. Utomo and Dr. Winifredo predominantly work in specialty rice variety development, and they have actually produced, developed a low glycemic index rice that also is about 30% higher in protein than normal rice. So that variety is just being released. It's gaining momentum into the marketplace, and we hope that, and think that that's going to have quite a bit of opportunity for producers moving in the future. And then finally, is our faculty and the other projects. Dr. Irish Papuion is our new agronomist. Dr. Monak Kungchum is also an agronomist that's been with us for several years. Dr. Eric Connor Webster is our weed science specialist. Dr. Felipe Delalana is our new pathologist. Dr. Blake Wilson is our entomologist. And again, we've had quite a bit of a turnover here in terms of faculty over the last four or five years, over the last year and a half. So we have about four new faculty members, and we feel very fortunate that we've been able to attract the quality of candidates that we've been able to attract. I think that goes back to the reputation that the Rice Research Station has, the ability that the research station has been able to be impactful in the industry. People want to come to work for us at the Rice Research Station because of the situation that we have there. And we feel very fortunate that we have a bunch of really bright, energetic, new faculty at the Rice Research Station. And then finally, our last two, Mr. Rick Zombrekker runs our foundation seed program, and Mr. Mark Shirley is our crawfish specialist and handles all our crawfish production work. Again, thank you so very much for taking, giving me the opportunity to talk about our Rice Research Station. It is certainly a pleasure. Please feel free, anytime you're in the Crowley area, stop by the Rice Research Station, get a cup of coffee. We'll drive you around and let you show you what we're doing at the research station. We're pretty proud of it, and we think we're making a positive impact to the industry.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
How do you see rice production overall in Louisiana? Are we growing production?
So we're, any given year, we have anywhere between 400,000 to 450,000 acres of rice in the state of Louisiana. In South Louisiana, it's pretty stable. We don't have very many alternatives to rice production. Where we've seen some growth has been more in central, in northeast Louisiana, where we have, we've done some research in kind of a new production strategy for rice, which is called row rice. They grow it basically the same way they would grow soybeans or corn on rows. And so that new production strategy has increased some interest in rice production in northeast Louisiana. I think we're a relatively stable industry. I don't see that we're going to see tremendous increases, but I don't think we're going to see the reduction in acres and reduction in production that we see sometimes in the other industries. We're probably going to be a 400,000 to 500,000 acre industry each and every year, just because of the infrastructure that we have in place and because of some lack of alternatives for producers, particularly in the southwestern part of the state.
As high as protein, is there marketing, branding on that that could help create a bigger market for it?
Yes, sir. So it was just released in 2021. And so we have an agreement with a company out of Illinois that markets it there, but we do also have a producer here about 20 miles from here that produces it and packages it as prairie rice or Cajun prairie. And that has, we've seen, he has seen his demand for that grow pretty exponentially over the last year. And so we think that we're beginning to see more acceptance of it. We're also starting to see some opportunities in terms of an export market for that particular commodity. So we think that there's a lot of potential down the road. I don't know that it's going to be a 500,000 acre variety, but I think we do have some opportunity there to expand over what we see now.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Dr. Guidry, I just want to tell you that we are enormously proud of the rice farm and the research in Crowley that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
I know that I've spoken about it in glowing terms every chance that I've gotten. And I also want to endorse rice over potato salad and gumbo. I never understood how anybody had a different view, but it takes all kinds. But thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And I just, I'd be remiss to say, the impact that the Rice Station makes, it's certainly not me, it's our faculty. And we have been able to have extremely hard-working, talented faculty and the ability to continue to maintain, to retain and bring in new faculty of that same characteristic is really what makes this station and its impact possible.
How many students are you recruiting? How many students?
So each of our faculty have some graduate students. So our breeder, our head breeder has, at this point in time, and it fluctuates over time, I think he has four graduate students that's working with him in this program. Each of our faculty, several of our new faculty are just starting. We have four new faculty that just started in 2022. So they're just now starting to establish themselves in terms of their graduate program. But the goal is for each one of those to have at least two graduate students at all time that they're training here at the Rice Research Station. We do hire student workers throughout the year to help with our research project. During the summer, we probably hire about 40 student workers from the surrounding community. And then we have internship programs that we, for the summer, that we'll bring in students to work with some of our faculty members. And again, that number kind of varies from year to year, but each of our faculty that are located at the station typically will have anywhere from two to three to four graduate students at any one time that they're working within their projects.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, it's the rice farmer's turn.
Thank you.
Mr. Guidry, thank you so much. Your impact on our industry, and I am a rice farmer, goes back generations in my family. It is vitally important to the economy of this state. I will endorse rice over my friends in the sweet potato industry and potatoes any day. I grew up eating rice at my table every day. Our family would not have the success it's had without the work that you all do and the work that's been going on for generations. And that goes for the entire rice industry in this state and across the country. My peers may not realize that, as we do have the premier Rice Research Station, we're talking about rice-producing states like California and Texas, as well as our neighbors in Arkansas and Mississippi. So the work we do here not only impacts across the country, but definitely across the world. And you can see that is represented by the faculty and also the visiting students and other industry leaders across the world who come to visit this research station every year. So thank you for the work you've done as we face always battle in the ag bill, as rice is the redheaded stepchild of the federal agriculture bill. The work we do here is very impactful. It helps producers stay in business. It helps us continue to support this industry that's vitally important to the state of Louisiana. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the rice industry. A lot of the research that we do there at the Rice Research Station is directly funded through a checkoff program by rice producers. They give money out of their pockets to fund the research that we do. And that funding level, or that funding that's made available through the Rice Checkoff Program and through the Rice Research Board is paramount in to being able to do the things that we do at the Rice Research Station. And yeah, we're greatly appreciative of it. We have a great working relationship with the rice industry. And even though we're the second-largest rice-producing state in the United States, Arkansas being first, they're trying to catch up to us in terms of what we do for research here at the Rice Station and LSU Ag Center. So we're pretty proud of that. We want to stay ahead of them. And thank you all for all of your support to help us do that.
Neither of us would be here without each other. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, LSU, for the work you continue to do. Is there any other business for the ag and research committee? Without hearing anything, is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
Second.
Second. Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Warner. Supervisor Brown, please convene the academic committee.
Thank you. Dr. Kane, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Do you have a call?
Thank you. I would say we have 100%. In absence of Dr. Hagerty, who's out of town, who definitely followed, we have Dr. Cassie here to present the items to the academic committee. Would you present the first item?
Sure. The first, excuse me, the first item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Chemistry. LSU A&amp;M currently offers the Bachelor of Science in Chemistry. However, the Department of Chemistry would like to join peer institutions by creating an interdisciplinary and flexible program for students who may pursue chemistry-related occupations. The purpose of the Bachelor of Arts in Chemistry is to provide a strong foundation in all major areas of chemistry while emphasizing the highly flexible curriculum to enable interdisciplinary studies. Thus, preparing students who may want to pursue other chemistry-related occupations aside from the professional chemist occupation, which requires rigorous theoretical and practical education and 500-plus contact hours in the library. Despite the very strong demand for positions that can be filled by qualified personnel with a bachelor's degree in chemistry, the supply of chemistry graduates in Louisiana is too low. Annual job openings within the state over the next 10 years far outpace degree completions in Louisiana. For every graduate of a chemistry-related degree in Louisiana, there are approximately seven openings available annually. Almost every one of LSU's Carnegie land-grant peers offers a BA alongside the BS track. Project enrollment is modestly set at 25 students in year one, increasing to 200 in year four. No additional fees are needed to start up the program, as all courses required for the program are taught routinely by current faculty. As the BA program grows, the department will hire new faculty and teaching assistants, and expected revenue will more than cover the cost of these additions. Thank you for the consideration of this item.
Thank you, Dr. Cassie. Are there any questions? If none, do we have a motion? Second.
I'll move to adopt the recommendation of Provost.
Second. Starnes? Supervisor Starnes, is it done? Okay. Mr. Mallett, second. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote? Okay. Would you present the next item, please, Dr. Cassie?
Sure. The next item on the agenda is a request from the LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans to establish an undergraduate certificate in categorical medical laboratory science. This certificate currently exists as a certificate that does not earn academic credit, and the request is to transform it into a certificate that does earn academic credit. Students will then have a path to national certification in a specialized category of library laboratory science. The Department of Medical Laboratory Science at LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, has offered a bachelor's degree in this area for over 30 years. A bachelor's degree is required to sit for board certification in the field of medical laboratory science. This certificate program would allow an individual who already possesses a BS degree to obtain the necessary coursework on a part-time basis to sit for the national certification exam in a single category of the MLS profession, allowing the student to be certified and licensed in a single discipline. There are no expected costs, as this is already offered as a non-degreed certificate. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? If none, do we have a motion?
So move.
Move. Ms. Arminter, Ms. Morrow, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Vote your path. Next item, please, Dr. Cassie.
The next item on the agenda is a request from LSU Alexandria to name the Martin Family Student Success Center. The Martin family has been steadfast supporters across the LSU system, and today, LSU Alexandria would like to recognize and state their appreciation of the Martin family's unwavering support of LSU A through this naming request. I'd like to turn it over to Chancellor Cruelle, who will say a few words about this item.
It's really an honor and a privilege to present this request to you on behalf of LSU A to recognize such an outstanding family and partner of all of LSU, not just LSU A. I've been working with LSU-affiliated institutions since 1978, and this company has had a profound impact on me as a professional in the commitment they have to the community, to the job creation that we need in this state, and to economic development. With the Ag Center, I worked a lot with them more in forest products. And as the largest forest landowner in Louisiana, private forest landowner, they have an impact throughout the state in hiring people and in managing resources sustainably, and they do a fantastic job of that. Most recently, y'all have heard a lot about the Centline Nurses for the Future and the Centline Accountants for the Future. This was all stimulated by the Martin family, primarily Roy Martin, to help the business community address critical need for faculty at LSU A. You know, we can wait and go to the legislature and try to get more funding, but these businesses, and Roy taking the lead, stepped up to the plate and got commitments over four or five years for salary support because we need more accountants and we need more nurses. The leadership that he exhibits is something that inspires me every day, I can tell you right now. You know, at LSU A, we're experiencing record growth. We're over 4,200 students. We need a student success center. So we, under the leadership of Melinda Anderson, who's here, she was the foundation executive director when we started, and now Kelly Pepper is our president of the foundation. We did a Fears for LSU, Fears for LSU A campaign, and y'all are well aware that we raised $5 million. But we needed major raised $5 million, but we, we needed major contribution to make the goal of $5 million. And who else but Roy Martin steps up and says, "We will make this happen. You're growing. We want to serve the students of central Louisiana and throughout the state." And they gave us a $2 million donation, which we could bring to the legislature as a private match to the funds we're getting, and you all will be there for the groundbreaking when the board meets at LSU A on April 21st. We're so excited about that, and want to thank you for that support. But the Roy Martin family has had a profound impact on central Louisiana and on LSU A in so many ways that I just can't begin to tell you because it would take too much time. But I can tell you right now, we have many members here, several members here of the Martin Family. Spencer Martin is here with his son Graham. Spencer's been a major supporter and a board member on our foundation. His son Graham is a junior in political science at LSU right now, and he's here. And then Roy and Kathy Martin are here as well, and I wanted to give Roy an opportunity to say a few words because getting $2 million at a small institution like LSU A is a pretty big deal, and we want to thank them appropriately and allow them to say a few words because I can tell you, I get pretty emotional about the support that we get from this family and this company, and they're making a difference in this state. They're making a difference for a lot, a lot of students, and they give back to the state of Louisiana, and I want to thank them for that. So, Roy, would you come up, please?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, thank you for allowing me to say a few things. I just, I can't say enough about this guy, and I can't say enough about the leadership of LSU, because Dr. Cruelle is one of the most dynamic, urgent, and focused academic leaders with whom I've been associated. His vision and leadership are inspiring. He's never afraid to take calculated risks. He knows how to announce challenging goals and is focused and willing to work tirelessly to achieve those goals for the student's success, and I can't emphasize how much, how important that is to me, student success. He doesn't make up reasons why he can't do something, or he doesn't have the time or the resource to do it. He just, and he just puts it out there with his vision, and you know what? People are inspired to give him the resources that he needs to do that, and it makes, inspires me. There's another guy, President Tate, who is a, who comes from the same mold. He has laid out the five pillars of success for LSU. He has the faith to start. He stated these large goals. He is building consensus among the leaders of the state, and the money, as you see, is pouring in, and I mean pouring in. When you state that vision, the resources will follow. It's just like I've always, I've always, you know, loved the phrase, "Where there's no vision, the people perish," and LSU is not perishing. You are growing. You are growing quickly, especially like at LSU A and at LSU E. It is inspiring to see that because that vision is out there. People will get behind that vision, and most importantly, business leaders like me are giving time as well as money and expertise to these efforts, and good thing, and the goals will, will, will be realized. And you know, LSU A has been cited as having a great value, and I've always said LSU degrees have great value, and that's part of that student's success. I know when I was on the Board of Regents, it came out that the engineering school at LSU had a top five in the country mid-career earnings, of most of it from the petrochemical industry, but that's very impressive for the price tag. That is, that is absolute value, and I think the Student Success Center is a very necessary place to help students get the information and guidance they need to choose their pathway correctly for themselves. The Martin Family, and I already introduced Spencer and Graham and Kathy, but Paul Cruelle left out the most important member of our family here today, and that is Sienna the Dog. You know, the Martin Family and pets are proud to support the Student Success Center. And LSU A and LSU E are vital parts of central Louisiana economics. We could not, you know, when they said, "Oh, LSU A should be a two-year institution again," people in Alexandria just, we just couldn't, couldn't handle that because we have to have a university to attract the best and brightest to our, to our area. And a coalition of us business leaders got together and said, "This can't happen. We have got to grow this university." And we got their faculty together and say, "Hey, by the way, you're gonna lose your job if you don't get some people in the school," and that's the truth. And they reacted, and then God brought us Chancellor Cruelle and Melinda Anderson to really spearhead and spark the growth of this. Spencer, I might add, too, as Chair of the LSU A Foundation, was very instrumental in getting Blue Cross Blue Shield to match the gifts that business had given to the Senn Line Nurses for the Future, and that doubled it to almost $1 million, I think. Northwestern State copied that, and I was a part of that also, and they got a big match from, from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, this model works, and I want to bring it to LSU A&amp;M. I think in the engineering school, in the business school, in the computer science school, in the applied sciences school, this type of business-led coalition can create dollars so that you can hire professionals at fair market value, not your budgeted amount. That doesn't work, by the way. We've got to pay the best and brightest the fair market value of their salaries to get them to LSU, and business, I promise you, is ready to do that. Why? We don't have many people. Have y'all noticed that millions of people have dropped out of the workforce? That has hurt, hurt our ability to grow, and we have got to have you, and we want, we want to, we want to pledge money to do that because as long as we can see that there is a vision, there is a, there is a plan to hire people, to hire instructors for those students, and to have compliers that we can hire, and the money will absolutely pour in. So, don't be afraid, be fierce for the future, and God bless. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, questions?
No, not only as a member of the Board of Supervisors, but personally, I want to thank the Martin Family for your commitment to not only LSU, but to the state of Louisiana, and that's, that's a big deal to everybody here.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
I'm an old friend of Roy Martin and an admirer of his Martin Family for many decades. I am anxious to move this forward.
Sure. In my four and a half years on the Board, Roy and Kathy have been there every step of the way, whether it's athletics, academics, financial, et cetera, every step of the way. And I want to point out, this is not the first time this week I've been in this kind of setting with Roy. Earlier this week, and this is a paid advertisement for my friend J. Dard, there's a, there's a, there's a program, Sunday night and Monday night, two-hour, two two-hour specials called Why Louisiana Ain't Mississippi, and it's terrific, and it's funded, and it's got, by the way, it's got a lot of LSU stuff in it. And there was a big preview party, and the governor spoke earlier this week, I forgot which night, and Roy and Kathy, of course, were stars of that as well because of their generosity. So, they are terrific Louisiana folk for LSU, but across the board for Louisiana Public Broadcast and God knows how many other things. So, I just want to thank you, Roy, for everything you do, and especially Kathy, and I forgot your dog's name, but I thank your dog. But thank you all tremendously.
Thank you. Oh, I do want to point out one other thing, Madam Chair, is we have an offer on the table to the Louisiana Ag, LSU Ag, and that is, an idea kind of came up that about three or four years ago, that LSU would like to plant a tree for every college student at Baton Rouge A&amp;M campus. And I said, "Well, that sounds like a great idea. I'd do that." And so, but let's not just do that. Let's plant a tree for everybody in the LSU system. 53,500 or so? Well, we'll, we make that pledge if y'all will accept it, and we'll work out some details, to plant a tree for every LSU student. We have a little piece of ground out there. 53,500 is about 100 and 105 acres, which we plant about $5 million a year or so. It's kind of a piece of cake for us. So, anyway, that's something else.
I've known Roy for a few years, and everything everybody says is true about you, and I admire you, and I've always enjoyed working with you. Thank you for all you do for Louisiana.
Thank you, Supervisor Mallett. I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes. Would you like to comment?
Yes, please. Roy, thank you for everything, and we'd love some of those trees in southwest Louisiana. We can talk about that.
There you go.
We need a few over there. But I also want to say that the partnership between LSU A, your family, and the entire business community in Alexandria led by Deborah Randolph at the Chamber is just stunning, and it has been transformational. A lot of people put a lot on the line to keep, to make LSU A a four-year institution many years ago, and a lot of people have put a lot on the line to keep it that way, and the leadership between the community, the business community there, and Dr. Cruelle has been just remarkable to see the growth and sustainability that's come about. We're really proud, and we appreciate that, and let's talk trees.
We are very proud of it, absolutely. They got Dequincy Sawmill starting back up, so that's good.
The good news.
That's right.
President Tate?
Well, success as a university president is really dependent on a lot. Obviously, your board is very important, the legislature, the governor, et cetera, but generally speaking, you're successful as a president if you have really philanthropically-minded folks who love an institution, who don't just give money, but give great advice, stand beside you when hard decisions have to be made, encourage you to make hard decisions. The things that sometimes folks in the general public don't see, I always tell people, never leave a university by what's in the journalistic outlets in the life. They report, but you need some, and that's very important, but you need people who can get in your ear literally and say, "You got to go for it." And Roy has been that person for me, and I really want to acknowledge just how important you've been my 18 months here, and Kathy has been delightful and encouraging as well, and I really appreciate you all, and you represent the very best of what it means to be an LSU Tiger, so thank you.
Got it, Tigers.
Roy, it's been said many, many times this morning, but I want to express my appreciation and gratitude to you and Kathy and Spencer for all that you do, not only for LSU A, central Louisiana, the state of Louisiana, but all the entire LSU enterprise, so just wanted to make sure you knew how grateful that we all are.
Chair Jones, thank you so much. I appreciate that on behalf of all Martin. We got three generations, by the way, here, so you're talking to three generations of Martin, so.
Thank you all for being here and for all that you do.
Supervisor Starnes?
Roy, I don't want to be left out, but I have certainly gotten, enjoyed getting to know you and working with you to promote LSU, and you have, everything that was said here is absolutely true, and I personally appreciate your efforts on behalf of LSU. I told the President and his leadership team what a great LSU Tiger you are and how you've always stepped up and supported our school, and I truly appreciate that. But LSU Tiger isn't, isn't the whole story, but LSU general, too, and what you've done and your family has done for LSU A has been transformational, and I really, really appreciate that, so thank you very much for your generosity.
Thank you, Supervisor. I appreciate it very much. Thank y'all very much. Merry Christmas.
Any other comments or questions? What an exciting time to be here in UNIS and hear all the good things that are happening. Thank you to the Martin Family. Thank you for Chancellor Cruelle. He's had a passion to get this building built, and we're close to it, and so really appreciate. Any, I think we need a motion.
So moved.
Supervisor Morrow, and we need a second. Yes, Supervisor Shaw. And all in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Wow. Well, it's gonna be hard to top that, but Dr. Cassidy, move on to the next item, please.
Excuse me, I'd like to defer to President Tate to introduce the next three agenda items.
Thank you. As you all know, I'm a student of LSU. I have a great passion for the history of the institution. It's in part why we embarked on the tour of agricultural institutions across the American South to get a sense of what happened 100 years ago when the leaders of LSU decided to go and embark on sort of a benchmarking activity related to agriculture, which is one of our pillars. In studying the annals of LSU history, one of the things that struck me that we have a unique opportunity to do is to reach back into history and look at the pioneers who attended LSU at a time perhaps when it was not the same LSU as it is today. These individuals pursued an education much like in our conversation about Title IX during a time when the Supreme Court and other legal entities in this country turned the clock back from Plessy versus Ferguson and moved it into a time where the institutions of higher education across this country would open their doors to African-American or black students in ways that had never happened before. And some individuals took on that challenge and attended LSU and opened the doors for what is now one of the most wonderful places in the world to matriculate in higher education. And as such, it is my honor to present to you a set of names that we would like to see granted, honorific opportunity to be part of the annals of LSU history in perpetuity as they represent, in my opinion, the very best of what had, of the students who have matriculated here. We have three recommendations. I will not read the totality of their bios. I will leave that up to my colleague, but the names are Dr. Pinky Gordon, and the request is to name the graduate school after Dr. Pinky Gordon Lane, who was the first black woman to receive a PhD at LSU. Her bio is, represents the very, very best of students who matriculated at the PhD level in LSU history. We'd also, I'd also like to recommend that Luttrell and Pearl Payne, we just left Nackettich, they were educators for many years there, and they actually were the first to integrate LSU. Excuse me. Pearl actually completed her degree at LSU, and Luttrell was the first to matriculate. And the third recommendation would be to name the Art and Design Building after Julian T. White, who was the first African-American professor at LSU and by all accounts beloved faculty member at this institution. Those would be the three recommendations. I will defer the longer biographical framing for my colleague.
I'd like to present, Tate. Comments? Questions?
So, I have, I have a biography of each one of them to read, if you'd like. Okay.
I'd just, I'd just like to say that we sincerely appreciate the effort that you've put forth, Dr. Tate, in this particular matter. I had the good fortune of knowing these individuals, and they're some outstanding professionals and were some great leaders in our, in our, in our state, so I really appreciate you putting this matter forward, and I look forward to our colleagues supporting it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I echo Mr. Temple. Also, if you haven't been in that, the Design Building and seen the mural of Dr. White and heard his story from the dean, it's incredibly inspirational, and so I highly recommend that you see that mural and visit with the dean about that gentleman's story. It's pretty amazing.
The first request on this part of the agenda is to name the LSU School of Education for Luttrell and Pearl Payne. From 1860 to 1899, LSU was a strictly segregated educational institution intended to service white students. After the Spanish-American War, the university admitted international students from newly-acquired territories, followed by Asian students. However, African-Americans were strictly barred from entry. The Plessy versus Ferguson U.S. Supreme Court ruling in 1896 allowed for separate accommodations of races if equal provisions were provided for whites and non-whites. of races if equal provisions were provided for whites and non-whites. For African-Americans choosing to pursue degrees in fields not offered by black-serving institutions in Louisiana, the state government paid their expenses to attend programs in other states. In 1950, Roy O. Wilson of Union Parish applied to the LSU Law School and was denied admission. His attorney, A.P. Truro Sr., made the claim that no state-funded law school existed in the state and Wilson should be admitted. A federal court ruled in Wilson's favor and he was admitted, though his admission was later contested by LSU due to a discrepancy in Wilson's academic record. In 1951, another Union Parish native, Luttrell Payne, sued for admission to graduate program in agricultural education. In the 1930s, Payne graduated from Grambling, moved to Natchitoches, married a teacher named Pearl, and had started a family before entering military service for World War II. A.P. Truro Sr. filed suit in federal court on Payne's behalf and after a very short trial, Payne won the case and was admitted for the summer 1951 term. On June 14th, 1951, Payne sent a telegram to his wife reporting, "Registered, completed, all is well," which was widely reported in national media. It was also shared that he was assigned a dorm room and he had a post office box at the university station. Mr. Payne was the first African-American to matriculate at the university. The university archives do not indicate Mr. Payne received a credential for his work, though publicly available records show a report card with passing grades. By September 1951, six more African-American students had earned admission to graduate and professional programs. In 1952, Mrs. Payne enrolled in the graduate school to pursue a master's of education. She commuted from Natchitoches to Baton Rouge weekly to attend classes. In 1953, Mrs. Pearl Payne became the first African-American woman to earn a degree at LSU. For their contributions as trailblazers, both joint name of Luttrell and Pearl Payne is being proposed for the LSU School of Education, the graduate program both, both Paynes attended. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College does hereby rename the School of Education as the Luttrell and Pearl Payne School of Education. I'm sorry, you were supposed to probably read that, Chair Jonas? In any event, that's, that is the introduction to it.
Now we have other.
Two others.
But if it's okay with the committee, we'll just take them all in one action. Is that okay? Good, thank you.
This request is to name the LSU Graduate School for Dr. Pinky Gordon Lane. Pinky Gordon Lane was born January 13th, 1923 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. She was the youngest child of William and Inez Gordon and their only child of four to survive infancy. Lane attended the Philadelphia School for Girls, graduating in 1940, and shortly after obtained a job in a sewing factory. She would hold this job for the entirety of the time America was engaged in World War II. In 1945, she enrolled in Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia, and graduated magna cum laude with a BA in English in 1949. Upon graduation, she taught high school English for six years across schools in Georgia and Florida. Lane pursued a master's degree in English from Atlanta University in 1956. After receiving her master's, she accepted her first college instructor position at Leland College in Baker, Louisiana. She remained in that post until she joined the English Department at Southern University in 1959. While teaching at Southern, Lane enrolled at LSU and became the first African-American woman to earn a doctoral degree in 1967 in English. Lane was appointed Southern's first woman English department chair in 1974 and served in that role until her retirement in 1986. Dr. Lane was not only known for her work as an educator, she was a poet and author, expressing her feelings as a black woman through her writings promoting a positive image for fellow black poets. Her first volume of poems, poems titled "Wind Thoughts" was published in 1972, shortly after her husband's passing, including poems reflecting her time working toward her doctoral degree. Her second volume of poems, "The Mystic Female," was published in 1978. This work led Lane's national audience to grow and the following year, her work was nominated for a Pulitzer Prize in 1979. Her contributions, publications, and skills as a poet led Governor Buddy Romer to appoint her as Louisiana's first black poet laureate in 1989. This put her among the ranks of Jean McGivney Bowes, the laureate before, who also served as the first woman on the Alexandria Civil Service Commission. She was then presented with the NCAAAP, NAACP Image Award in 1990. Dr. Lane was a pioneer in her field. Her work educating youth, her dedication to furthering her own education no matter the odds, and her contributions to American literature and poetry embodies the message of scholarship first and the spirit of graduate studies. In memory of her example and in her area of interest, it is recommended that the graduate school be named for Dr. Lane. The third request is to name the Art and Design Building for Julian T. White. Julian Thaddeus White was born August 12th, 1937 in Alexandria, Louisiana. On a visit to campus when he was only nine years old, he told his grandmother that he would one day attend LSU and his grandmother responded, "It was impossible," since he wouldn't have been admitted at the time. While attending the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, where he received his undergraduate and graduate degrees in architecture. In 1961, after completing his bachelor's, Professor White took his architecture license examination held on LSU's campus. He was forced to take this examination in a separate room from the other students, who were all white males. This same room would go on to be his office for many years once he returned to be a faculty member. Upon passing his examination, he became the second black licensed architect in Louisiana after Ferdinand Lucien Rousseau, who received his licensure in 1933, almost thirty years prior. After receiving his license in 1961, White worked at Southern University and began his own practice as an architect. While doing so, he returned to the University of Illinois to complete a master's program in architecture. After receiving this degree in 1964, he became a visiting professor for the Tuskegee Institute. He continued serving as visiting professor while also working for the Houston-based renowned architectural firm Cato, Rowett, and Scott from 1967 to 1970. After ten years of traveling back and forth for educational and career growth, he accepted a position as an architect faculty member at LSU, making him the first African-American at the university. White retired from LSU in 2003 after serving thirty-three years at the university and passed away from cancer only eight years later. Professor White is remembered fondly by his students. Architect Ken Tipton led Fund Drive for scholarship in White's name. Architect Kasia Gallo named a child for White. At the request of the Architecture Department and its alumni, the LSU Board of Supervisors approved the naming of the Art and Design Building's atrium for White in 2017. In 2020, a three-story mural of White was hoisted into the atrium and the work was funded by former students. For his contributions as the first African-American professor at LSU, his long career standing as a professor, the respect he inured from his students, and the honors given him by his professional societies, it is being recommended that honorific naming for Julian T. White be affixed as the permanent name of the entire building.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cassidy, for bringing forward those informative and important bios of our alumni and faculty and very important action that will be taken. So any, what comments, questions do we have from our committee? And we thank President Tate for his leadership. Yes, sir.
That should be a motion by acclamation.
Okay. Do we need a second? Second for that? Good, okay. Okay. Everybody's in favor of that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cassidy. Very, very good. Thank you for this wonderful presentation and meaningful contribution. Thank you. And any, President Tate?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'd also like to indicate that in terms of the Dr. Pinky Gordon Lane Graduate School and the Luttrell Pearl School of Education, Payne School of Education, it is my intent in this next Capitol campaign to do everything I possibly can to ensure that scholarships and fellowships are also created in their name to the other students may matriculate at the institution without the burden of debt and free to be as best they can as students at LSU, financially supported fully. And that is my commitment to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That, that would be wonderful. Any, any other comments? We, next, next item of business. There, there are several routine business items that include requests from LSU Health Science Center's report to establish the Noel Foundation Light's endowment professorship in Parkinson disease, requests from LSU A&amp;M to dissolve the School of Collaborative Academic Programs, augment the Dr. Shirley Tucker Endowed Chair in Lichenology, Lichenology, augment five endowed superior graduate student scholarships, establish two endowed superior graduate student scholarships, and offer the MS and FINES 100% online. A request from LSU UNIS to reaffirm the LSU E mission statement, requests from LSU Alexandra to revise the LSU A mission statement, and establishment of the Alexandra Business Foundation Endowed Chair in Accounting. These can all be taken in one action, but if anyone has any questions about any of these items or listed on our agenda, and Dr. Cassidy can help us if we have any questions from our committee. If no questions, we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Okay. With Supervisor Warner and, motion, second by Supervisor Warner. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those are all very worthwhile and actions need to be taken. With that, I would, we're covering a good, very good business today in our committee. Thank you all. And is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Supervisor Shaw and second Supervisor, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Aronson, please convene the Property and Facilities Committee.
Happy to, thank you. Dr. Kane, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuzlott? Do you have a call?
Good, thank you. Ms. Lewis, can you please present these four items for us?
Yes, Ms. Aronson, thank you very much. The first item on the Property and Facilities Committee agenda is a request from LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, to authorize a corporate endeavor agreement with the LSU Healthcare Network for Seton Hall. Back, it was, you know. I'm a little louder than maybe necessary. So this corporate endeavor agreement would allow for the LSU Health Science Center and the LSU Health Network to create a primary care clinic next to the Health, or as a part of the Health Science Center. This would provide for the students, staff, and faculty of the Health Science Center the opportunity to have a student health clinic as well as primary care access at the Health Science Center. Currently, that is not available. It would also move some of the practices that have not been located near the Health Science Center onto the Health Science Center and increase the primary care availability as well as some of the specialized care near the Health Science Center in New Orleans. There is currently a lease in place between the Health Science Center and the Health Network. It was signed in 2017. This expands the amount of space that is included in that lease. It requires the Health Network to make some additional improvements to the building. When this lease is up in the next five years, those improvements would become the property of the Health Science Center in New Orleans and it increases the amount of the payment. I think the current payment is $171,000. The new payment would be $250,000 a year and it would increase annually during the five-year period. The big benefit, of course, is providing access to primary care for our students, our staff, as well as those faculty members who need to seek medical care. And we all know that they spend a lot of their time on campus, so this would provide that primary care for them on that campus in New Orleans.
That sure makes sense. Are there any questions? If none, is there a motion to approve the item, please?
No.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any objection? The motion approves. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is also related to the LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, and this is to authorize an intent-to-lease agreement with the LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation for Health Science, New Orleans property redevelopment. Also, back in 2017, the board approved the redevelopment of the Charity Hospital facility. This facility coming back into commerce has sparked interest in bringing those other buildings back into commerce. The idea now is to do an intent-to-lease and have a development of those additional properties. Those properties surround the Charity Hospital building. I think in your binder or in onboard, there's a map showing you the properties that would be up for consideration. We would again bring in a developer to assist us with this project. When we did Charity Hospital, Jones, Lang, LaSalle was the group that came in to work with the foundation on the Charity Hospital. There would be a facility, Real Estate Facilities would be the one that would be handling this. The LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation would be handling it, but many of the properties would hopefully be of interest to somebody to develop and bring back into commerce, seeing that Charity Hospital will soon be back open and will have a lot of different options in that building as well as the new medical facilities that are coming online with the Health Science Center. So under the intent-to-lease, a project management committee would be created to oversee the project. That project management committee would include LSU staff, LSU Health Science, New Orleans staff, as well as both the New Orleans Health Foundation staff and Real Estate Foundation staff to oversee this project. Any final proposed lease would come back to the board for approval and we are not at risk financially unless there are no developers that come in to participate and then we would be out of the cost of the intent-to-lease expenses that would go into developing any proposals. So the only risk we have financially in going this route is if no one decides to go forward with the redevelopment. But considering where we are with Charity Hospital, I don't think we're at risk that we would not have any developers who would be interested in taking on one of these buildings.
Good. Are there any questions?
How much would that be? If it failed, how much, how much do we have invested?
We're expecting a couple of hundred thousand dollars in the cost for the intent-to-lease.
I got a quick question. What, what buildings are these around the charity building?
I have a list of them and I can go through them, but the David Building, the current clinical buildings, there's some, a group of buildings called the laundry buildings that we currently have a lease with University Medical Center for, but it's a group of buildings, the block contiguous to Charity, including Perdito and LaSalle. It's about seven buildings around there.
So we're gonna intent-to-lease maybe, how many square feet total?
I do not know the square footage of all of the buildings. I, I cannot tell you that, but it's, they would, the proposal would be for each building done separately or possibly any individual building. We don't have a model yet of what they would look like. We are just starting the process.
Okay. Because Charity's a long way away from even having anything done to it, right? Okay. Because Charity's a long way away from even having anything done to it, right?
Charity is in, starting the process, demolition and construction.
Right, but it's years away from being let to anybody or anything sold, right?
No, we've actually started the demolition and construction process with Charity.
Right, a year or so maybe ago? I'm just getting aware, are we jumping the gun on this issue? Any, if nobody, if all we're gonna do is put out a...
Intent-to-lease?
Intent-to-lease these buildings with...
So...
I just hadn't heard it. I'm not on the committee. I'm just curious to know why it was today. We had many meetings about Tulane prior to...
But Jay, I think what they're trying to do, that's why I asked how much. It's a gamble of $200,000 on bigger potentials, what I see. And it gets us forward, in forward motion, because I do believe whoever does, who has Charity is going to do something, and I agree with it, that that costs.
I'm not disagreeing with the program. I'm just asking a few questions about how many square feet.
I have some questions, too. I just think for $200,000 to be forward with when Charity does go, I think it's a pretty good investment. I think it's a good chance it'll succeed.
Yeah, I'm not knocking it. I'm just asking a question on, you know, you know, sometimes you're a little leery on all of these, you know, buildings and real estate we just hand over to the Real Estate and Facilities Committee just to lease stuff out.
But that all has to come back to us.
This is all coming back to the board. This is just starting the process of what could be.
I understand, but, you know, a lot of things come to the board to be done that's almost already done when it comes to us, and I'm just trying to get in front of it to say, look, we'd like to see some of the things before they, before they ride on top of us.
I agree with that. I agree with you.
I feel, can I say something? So the Charity, Steve Nelson, the Charity facility, they anticipate opening part of it in a year and a half.
Right.
Some of these properties are, have current leases, as Kimberly pointed out. So this, obviously, nothing would occur until these leases expired in the next couple of years. And there's already interest from other developers about some of these properties already. But I agree with you 100% that as Charity comes back in, more of it becomes operational, probably the value of these properties will increase as well. So timing is critically important. This is just to start the process, as Ms. Lewis pointed out.
I'm all over it. I just don't want, I guess we're kind of leery on Nicholson Gateway. Remy and I kind of got stirred up over that still. But I'd hate to issue some leases now on a, on a small, undervalued program for 50 years and then come to find out about it a couple of years from now.
I think, as Ms. Lewis pointed out, this is really just the start, the very beginning of the process, and anything that would occur would have to come back to the full board.
I'm all for it. We just don't want to leave any ingredients out of the gumbo.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
We need all the money we can get.
That's right.
Thank you. That was helpful.
And there is a board member on the project management committee, Mr. Blossman, appointed by the chair. So it's not...
Oh, I'm good. I'm glad for that. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that item? Ready? Warner and Mallett, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Thank you very much. Would you please present the third item for us?
The next item is also, Dr. Nelson is working me today. This is the Healthcare Services Division. A request for the LSU Healthcare Services Division to amend the prior approval of a request to sell the former Earl K. Long Hospital property. So the board has previously, at a meeting in 2020, September 11th, 2020 meeting, approved the sale of the former Earl K. Long Hospital property on Airline Highway in Baton Rouge. The property is being sold to the East Baton Rouge Housing Authority. Due to the pandemic, this sale was delayed, and the original board resolution approved in 2020 authorized the interim President Galligan to sell the property. We are now asking that the resolution be amended to authorize President Tate to execute the documents. We also have an updated appraisal, so the value increased from $1,085,000 to $1,185,000. And the proceeds are going to not go to deferred maintenance. Previously, when this project started, the funds would go to replace the roof on the old Kmart building, which is where the LSU Healthcare Services Division is currently operating. We are in negotiations with the Division of Administration on the future of the old Kmart building. They need that space, and they have to approve us retaining the $1.185 million. So the resolution would also change that the proceeds would not be used for deferred maintenance on the Kmart building, but would go to the highest and best use for the benefit of the Healthcare Services Division, because we simply don't know if we will continue to remain in the Kmart building in the future. So that is the request.
Are there any questions from the committee or otherwise?
Again, I'm not on the committee, but a quick question. If it was going to deferred maintenance...
Deferred maintenance on a specific building, the old Kmart building.
Right, and is it impossible to just move it from the Kmart building to another deferred maintenance instead of putting it in a general fund type of thing?
It's not going necessarily to the general fund. It's for the Healthcare Services Division specifically.
Highest and best use, right.
Right, and the Healthcare Services Division doesn't own any immediate property in Baton Rouge, but they may be transferring to, those employees may be moving to another facility. So then that's what we would negotiate, but whatever it is, it would be for the Healthcare Services Division.
Is the Kmart building we're in associated with the healthcare?
Yes, it was all the contiguous area. So the Healthcare Services Division, the back of the Kmart building is, or the old Kmart building is behind the emergency room that's on Airline Highway.
Oh, okay. All right.
If I can, Ms. Lewis, the old Kmart building is where there's hundreds of thousands of medical records being stored because of the deal with Our Lady of the Lake, and the roof is leaking, which poses a problem. And so, and also the Department of Transportation, they want to put a transfer bus station right where that is, which would run right through the building. So we don't think that's a good idea. And so the idea is the Department of Administration is trying to find another facility, and that's what Ms. Lewis is trying to point out, those funds would help to kind of find pay the rent. That's the idea.
It's, they would be moving somewhere else.
I was just making sure that the money was staying within the health division.
Highest and best use of the health, for benefits for the Healthcare Services Division.
I was not aware about the Kmart being used for that. And then if it was just gonna be taken from you guys after we sold the building and then put over here in another highest and best use, I wanted to, so...
Highest and best use of the proceeds for the benefit of the Healthcare Services Division. Healthcare Services Division.
I got it. Thank you.
If I didn't say that before, I mean...
Well, you did. I just didn't know the Kmart building was part of the Earl K. Long campus type.
Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion carries. Thank you. Last item on the agenda, Ms. Lewis?
This is the request approval for transfer of assets from Pennington Medical Foundation to the Pennington Biomedical Research Foundation. In 1980, the Pennington Medical Foundation was established by Doc Pennington and his wife Irene with a $125 million gift that led to the creation of what we know as the Pennington Biomedical Research Center, the campuses, all the buildings that are on Perkins Road. Those gifts are that very generous gift in 1980, is now in a trust with that Pennington Medical Foundation. But the value of that trust is at approximately $450,000, having built everything that we know and love as Pennington. The Pennington Medical Foundation sent a letter to the university because the trust document says that the proceeds can be transferred to another 501(c)(3). The Pennington Biomedical Research Foundation is another 501(c)(3). LSU is not a 501(c)(3). So the request made was for the acceptance of those trust funds into the Pennington Biomedical Research Foundation. The Uniform Affiliation Agreement requires that the board agree that this is an acceptable university purpose before it takes place. The other request that was made was that the name Pennington Medical Foundation remained permanently on and not be removed from the Pennington campus. That request was specifically made by Paula Pennington de Belleton, and Mary Warner serves on the Pennington Foundation Board, and she was present and can attest to the wishes of the donor, that we maintain that, the foundation has agreed with that. And I think Dr. Kerwin can also attest to that. The $450,000 value, as well as the mineral interest, will become a permanent part of the Pennington Biomedical Research Foundation's assets with the approval of this transfer.
Are there any questions? If none, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a comment. Dr. Kerwin, if you'd like to add, I just want to, once again, thank the Pennington family. This is just a transfer of the remainders of that into what is now the operating foundation, if there's any questions on that. But, you know, Paula Pennington de Leporton stays very active and involved, not only with Pennington Foundation, but with everything LSU. And we owe a great deal to her and her parents, this entire family, and the work that the foundation continues to do to promote LSU. The president's, one of the pillars of the president's Pentagon in health and wellness for our state, and we want to recognize this gift to the other foundation, I guess is the, not quite the best way to put it, but also that that monument to her family will continue to hold the name. And that's very important as we move forward and LSU moves forward in this century and go forward. So Dr. Kerwin, I don't know if you'd like to say anything, but we're very grateful for the work of the Pennington family and their continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. On behalf of Pennington Center, I would like to ensure that we acknowledge, this is a historic moment, actually, because this particular foundation is the, is the vehicle that provided all of the construction that has gone on at Pennington. And this is part of a natural wind-down process. And so the remaining funds that are in that foundation are being now transferred into our research center. The important part of this, I think, for the long term is the recognition of the name, the Pennington name, and the Pennington Medical Foundation. And I think Paul's intent there is to ensure that that particular endeavor continues to be recognized and is present on the campus and is fully supported by everybody on the campus, everybody in the center and foundation, and I would imagine the community, and I would hope the board. But I wanted to publicly acknowledge the contribution that the Pennington family made and our appreciation to that.
Thank you for those comments, and I know everyone here recognizes the gem that we have in Pennington. There is just nothing like it in this entire country, and their contributions to LSU are immense. So we will certainly do anything in our power to support Pennington for a lifetime. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Thank you. Robert?
Second.
Ms. Shaw, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Is there a motion now to adjourn the committee? Thank you. All in favor? Any objection? Committee is adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, very much.
Thank you Supervisor Aronson. Mr. Temple has deferred as chair due to his voice today. I'll be asking Jay Blossman to serve as chair of athletics for this meeting. Supervisor Blossman, please convene the athletics committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Kane, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Temple?
He's here.
I show the hand. Thank you. Mr. Zeuslog? Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? You have a call.
Okay, thank you. We have three items on the agenda. Mr. DeCure, would you please read them out?
Mr. Blossman. What we have today are three employment contracts, and I'll run through them fairly quickly. The first is Executive Deputy Athletics Director Kelly Zinn. She is a replacement for Stephanie Rimp when she left to be the athletics director, University of Nevada. It is a contract through June 30th of 2026 at a base compensation of $425,000. The second is an assistant baseball coach for Joshua Jordan. It is a base salary of $300,000, and it runs through June 30th of 2025. He's listed as assistant baseball coach. I believe he's actually the pitching coach that has just been recruited. And the third is a deputy athletics director for revenue generation. This contract will run through December 31st of 2024 at a base compensation of $250,000. The deputy athletics director for revenue generation is responsible for overseeing the sales of all athletic sponsorship and advertising inventory. If there's any questions, I'm ready.
Any questions? Comments? Can I do one motion for all three?
Yes, you can request a motion to approve all three.
Okay. So, Ms., we got a bunch of them. Ms. Warner waved at me first for the motion, and I'll go, Pat Morrow's been second at everything, so damn if you're on the record now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Eyes have it. Carrie, thank you. I guess there's nothing left on the...
Before you adjourn, before you adjourn your committee, I'd like to point out that probably what's wrong with Carlos Temple's voices, he was pulling for the Oak Grove High School football team in their state championship last night, which beat Kentwood two weeks ago.
That's probably what happened. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, also, I think it makes the meetings much more efficient if Mr. Temple doesn't have a voice.
I agree. I think he's, I think he's realized that. That's why he tapped me to go ahead and take over for today. Okay, I heard no objections to adjourning, so, Madam Chairman, our committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Blossman. Supervisor Shaw, please convene the Title IX and Access Compliance Committee.
Mr. Zeuslog? Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Starnes? Mr. Temple, by way of a hand, thank you. Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? You have a call.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Today, we will receive the biannual report pertaining to power-based violence on our campuses from the period of April 1st, 2022, through September 30th of 2022. The reports were previously provided electronically. Additionally, I would like to invite Mr. Todd Manuel, our Vice President of Inclusion, Civil Rights and Title IX, to the podium for a brief update.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Shaw and to other members of the board. You've received your, our report on power-based violence. It is in your electronic documents that have been submitted by law. Act 472 of the 2021 Louisiana Legislative Session requires us to provide a report out in terms of how we're doing as it relates to power-based violence. That includes training that we provide to folks who are identified as responsible reporters as well as confidential reporters. All that information has been provided to you, and we're submitting that for your approval.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you for providing that report. Is there a motion to receive the report?
So moved. Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Then the motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the committee. All in favor? Any objection? The committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Shaw. I'll now entertain a motion to reconvene the board meeting. Supervisor Mallett, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any objection? Without objection, the meeting will now come to order. Dr. Kane, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Ms. Aronson? Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Browns?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Wave of a hand, thank you.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Mrs. Zeuslog. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. For our approval are the minutes of the board meeting held on October 21st, 2022. These minutes were previously provided. Does anyone have any corrections? If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. At this time, I'd like to recognize LSU A. Chancellor Paul Correll to share a video with us today.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. This will be very short, but I know many of you had conflicts on our grand opening day of the new drainage and infrastructure project, which you all were there for the groundbreaking back June of 2021, when the governor was there, a great day of celebration. Well, I want y'all to see what the results look like. It has changed the face of our campus. We have a plaza now, and we have fantastic drainage. We don't have fish swimming on the sidewalk anymore. So I wanted to show y'all, it's about, it's less than two minutes. Supervisor Warner and Chair Jones were able to come, so they've already seen it, but I wanted to rest y'all to see it, because I think y'all would take great pride in the improvements that we made. Thank y'all very much. When you come on the 21st, y'all gonna be able to see it firsthand, so appreciate the support to get us the legislative and federal appropriations to do this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Correll. The LSU Drainage, LSU A. Drainage Project not only beautifies the LSU A. Campus, but enhances the quality of life for our students, faculty, and staff. Ms. Lewis, please introduce our presenter today for the Emergency Operations Center Enterprise Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Michael Antoine is the Director of the LSU Office of Emergency Preparedness. He is going to provide an update on where we are with our emergency preparedness efforts, as well as campus safety. This past semester, we've had a lot of questions from the Board and the community about campus safety and public safety in general. We were fortunate to hire Mr. Antoine this year. He joined us over the summer, and since being here, he has done a great job. A lot of you have had the opportunity to meet him during some of our on-campus events this semester. Prior to coming to LSU, he served as the Director of Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness for the Tulane Health System. He's also been Chief of Staff for Public Safety and Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness for the City of New Orleans. And he has a Bachelor's of Science in Public Health and Emergency Management and a Master's Degree in Homeland Security and Emergency Management. He's a PhD candidate in urban planning, and most recently, he was appointed by the FEMA Director to serve on the National Emergency Management Advisory Council. So he is advising at the federal level on emergency management and emergency planning. So we are pleased to have him with us at LSU, and he is going to give us an update on everything that happens. He's got 20-plus years of experience in this area, and he does great work. Mr. Antoine?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, for the intro. I want to thank the Board for allowing me an opportunity to come and present. Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Executive Vice President for letting me be a part of the LSU family. And I look forward to making LSU a model for what public safety and emergency operations should look like in institutes of higher ed. So I'll give you a brief overview of campus safety and our emergency operations that we currently have going on, as well as some future initiatives. So just a little bit about the Office of Emergency Preparedness. We the number-one coordinate, public safety coordinating office for the university. We design to make sure that not only the university is prepared for, but ready to respond to any hazards, natural, technological, man-made, et cetera. Some other responsibilities that we also continue to assess the threats and implement safeguards based on lessons learned, best practices, and some of the current trends and events. We want to make sure that we're adapting plans to meet the newfound threats that happen every day in college campuses. We conduct risk assessments and develop site-specific emergency plans for the Baton Rouge locations, but also want to assist our other locations in the campus, so providing that holistic emergency management and public safety approach across the LSU system. We investigate and develop and implement policies and procedures related to homeland security and emergency preparedness issues to ensure the university remains ready for whatever may come our way. And we also coordinate with our local parish and state and federal entities to make sure that we're adopting current trends, we're in compliance with best practice, and utilizing those trends in our plans in public safety operations. Little about our emergency operations. We establish command and control and unify command for all major emergencies and events. You've seen some of that during our home football games. We have over 30 agencies assisting us with our public safety efforts to ensure everyone's safety. We maintain 24/7 operational preparedness for the university operation system in event of a large-scale event. So we know Louisiana is not a stranger to hurricanes and weather events, so we want to make sure that we're prepared for that. We also manage the LSU Emergency Alert System and other campus emergency notification methods. I just want to note that we've instituted over 75 templates into our emergency operation, the emergency alerting system, to make sure that we can send out those alerts more efficiently and rapidly. On a policy level, we develop and implement policies and procedures to make sure we're adapting to those new profound threats and current trends. Just some snapshot of our current plans. We have our comprehensive emergency operation plan to like, I would like to highlight that that plan is a brand-new plan. It hadn't been updated since 2012, so now we would have a new comprehensive emergency operation plan that we would like to implement throughout the entire LSU system. We have a campus all-hazard plan. We have a business continuity plan that's underway. That's a holistic, comprehensive plan for the university's system again, which will be the first in the system's history. We also have evacuations planned to include our students with access needs and also the vet school, protecting animals. And we have our event emergency action plans for all major special events that we host on campus. This next slide highlights our state partnership plans and operations. So not only does LSU provide education, but we also step up and assist the state in ensuring the safety of our Louisiana residents during a disaster. So in respect to that, we host a medical special needs shelter at the Car Medics Field House, where folks who have medical and access needs come there and ride out a storm. We also host a federal medical station at the PMAC, where we serve as a hospital when hospital and critical infrastructure doesn't allow hospitals to operate as normal. We serve as a bus forwarding triager at the Ag Center, where our citizens are triaged to determine whether they can ride out a storm in a shelter or have to be transported to a hospital. And we also serve as a reunification site for the River Bend Nuclear Station at Tiger Bend Hall. So if there will ever be a catastrophic incident at the nuclear facility, we will host those personnel and staff as a reunification site. Some of our current initiatives, as I mentioned, we have a new campus comprehensive emergency operation plan. Since my onboard into LSU, we've incident, incident action plans and situation reports for all major special events to maintain that situational awareness and know what's going on at all times while we're hosting events on campus. We created a communications list, so now we have a solidified communications list called the 205T, where you have every name and phone number of anyone you may need to get in contact with on campus. We're developing a continuity of operations plan that will be in compliance with national standards. And then also implementation and training on all those new plans, which is scheduled the first quarter of next year. Future initiatives, we want to establish a stakeholder committee. We have a committee to evaluate our plans and operations to make sure that we're providing the utmost plans for the safety of our students. We want to conduct a new threat and hazard identification and risk assessment to include a gap analysis, to make sure that our plans are addressing the current threats and hazards that threaten upon us at LSU. We also going to develop the need and plans revisions based on those gap analysis. So any things that are exposed in that gap analysis, we will revise our plans to make sure we meet the needs of those threats. We're also developing a reunification plan. Over the past week, I had the opportunity to meet with the leadership at UAV to discuss the incident that happened on their campus, I'm sorry, UVA. And one of the things we identified was a reunification site. So we're working on a holistic reunification site where we have an off-campus site where our students could be housed during an event where they can reside at their normal residence on campus. We're developing also a comprehensive active shooter plan for the university. That plan will be developed the first quarter of the year, and I'd be willing to share that with all the campuses across the system once that's completed. We're also working with the Board of Regents to create a resiliency framework and recovery plan for the Louisiana universities. I like to highlight LSU has been selected to pilot that program. So we're working closely with them to identify recovery and resilience frameworks that could be utilized across all state universities. We also will be moving to a new emergency management platform called wherever you see. That would give us the opportunity to integrate with our local and state government when it comes to emergencies and disasters. And we're also exploring some software for messaging via all-wall monitors across campus. So when we send out emergency alerts, they not only go to your email, text through your phone, but you'll also see them across all-wall monitors on the campus. Some of our new future initiatives to provide that mutual aid support for the university's system, coordinating our preparedness efforts across the entire system, leveraging our information sharing, assistance with planning, system representation with state efforts. We have a long-lasting relationship with the local and state leaderships at the A&amp;M University, and we want to leverage that across the system. Coordinate response efforts as far as incident management, coordination of assets, as we know, things like generators, lighting, that becomes a necessity during disasters and emergencies. Coordinating with our state agencies and maximizing our system assets, and just to make sure we're better prepared for those long extended activations. Two weeks without power, how do we manage that? Making sure LSU has the capacity in place to manage that. And then also hosting annual training. So we work like we train. So if we train holistically across the system, we'll all work in that same fashion. This next section highlights reimagining public safety at LSU, the public safety and emergency operation integration of the university. I'd like to start off with our police department. Looking at our divisions currently, we have 60 commissioned officers. We have five non-commissioned officers, and we're looking to hire five more, so that'll put us at 70. And I'd like to highlight, compared to our SEC counterparts, our police officer-to-student ratio is much greater than some of the other universities in the SEC. We have our Uniform Patrol Division and Mountain Bike Patrol. We have community outreach. We have our Motor Traffic Brigade. We have detectives and investigators. We have officers on bikes. We have our K-9 explosive and bomb detection dogs. And we have also patrol support services, which includes our special response team, our honor guard IT services, which manages our cameras and radios on campus, and then to our evidence technicians, as well as internal affairs. On notifications, we have multiple ways to send notifications to students and staff when an emergency happened on campus. As I noted earlier, we now have 75 pre-scripted messages embedded in that system, so we could rapidly send out those messages more effectively. We have email notifications. We have notifications you get on your desktop, as well as our social media updates managed by our comms team. We also have our LSU Shield app, which we continue to encourage our students, faculty, and staff to register for. The LSU Shield app allows you to dial 911. Immediately upon dialing 911, your GPS location is tracked in real time. It also allows you to file a report, watch friends, request campus transit, and report any unsafe incident to LSU PD. LSU PD also offers self-defense courses. We have women and men's self-defense courses. We have our rape progression defense courses, as well as our Equalizer of Women and Men's Self-Defense Training. We offer that training upon requests in three-hour blocks to students, faculty, and staff, as well as the public. We have our community outreach programs. As you all may know, Officer Kim Bass, who sometime escorts our board members to their cars after Saints games, I mean LSU games and Saints games. But we ensure that we have a voice in all our student agencies, student government, and all of the student organizations on campus, Greek Life, Rest Life. We make sure we participate and have a voice in all of those meetings and create that open relationship where we can get information in and provide the best resources to support them in their efforts. I'd like to point that our law enforcement at LSU is Calia Certified. There's not too many Calia certified law enforcement agencies on university campuses, so we would like to highlight. And what that does is require us to develop comprehensive, uniform set of written directives. This is one of the most successful methods for reaching administrative and operational goals for police departments. It also requires a preparedness program to be put in place, so our police departments is ready to address any natural and man-made disasters that impacts the campus. It also strengthens the law enforcement accountability, both within the agency and the community, with a continuum of standards that clearly define authority, performance, and responsibilities of law enforcement officers. It also facilitates the department's pursuit of professional excellence, and we'd like to highlight that we just went through a recertification on this week for Calia Certification. Some of our partnerships with LSU PD, we make sure that we have us touching everything that's happening in or around campus. So we coordinate with the Lighthouse Program. We coordinate with Rest Life, the Dean of Students, Student Advocacy and Accountability. We talk the campus life and make sure that we're providing the utmost safety for the residential halls, the care team, as well as our Student Health Center Mental Health We have our active shooter response training, which includes multi-agency active shooter response. So as I stated, we coordinate with our local and state partners on a daily basis, because they're going to be responding to a major incident that would happen on campus. So again, we train together like we play together. We have our basic active shooter training for internal and external agencies. We have a robust active shooter policy and procedure, but as I stated, we're also writing a comprehensive active shooter response plan as well, that I hope will be adopted through the system. We have critical incident assignments. We have our critical incident management training, and we also participate in monthly joint training with Baton Rouge PD Special Response Team as well. This just highlights some of our response team. As I noted, we have our K-9 bomb detection and explosive detection dogs. We have our special response team you see there. So I think currently now we have two dogs on campus, but we also have a partnership with East Baton Rouge Service Office to bring additional two dogs if we ever have to search campus for any bomb or explosive device. Some of our current initiatives and operations, as I stated, we're hiring additional commissioned officers. That program has been robust, as we know, law enforcement is struggling around the country, so we're doing a good job and striving in the right direction on retention. We had three officers just completed the post-academy in November, and we have three additional starting in January. We hired five non-commissioned officers and currently recruited an additional five. Those officers act sort of as security guards, and they're on 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM and patrolling around the campus. I also like to highlight a recent success story with the five we addition we just hired, that a dumpster fire was rapidly identified and mitigated real quickly in the middle of the night by one of those non-commissioned officers. We created posts outside the rez halls for increased visibility for our students returning to their residential halls in the night hours. We have our campus exterior lighting project that's underway. We're upgrading our camera system around campus. I'd like to highlight currently, we have 1,700 cameras at the LSU A&amp;M campus, and we're upgrading servers, as well as other supporting equipment to enhance the camera operations. We have our rave emergency alert system, as I highlighted. We have 75 pre-scripted templates and have over 40,000 students, faculty, and staff register, receive alerts through that system. We have seventy-five pre-scripted templates and have over forty thousand students, faculty and staff register receive alerts through that system. Well, for our campus shuttle, um, it's a free shuttle known as campus transit. It's on demand and it runs five P M. to midnight, seven days a week to assist students with transportation around the campus. We also have our safe transport program. So any student or employee who needs a ride on campus after campus transit closes can can request LSU P D for a safe transport. And we also engage in our public safety partnership with the mayor's office, Baton Rouge P D, East Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office, as well as Louisiana State Police. Uh, participating in monthly meetings to leverage this partnership and maintain the situational awareness. So just to highlight some of the upgrades going on with the security set, with the security uh system. As I mentioned, the campus currently has about seventeen hundred cameras. Already in twenty twenty-two, we've upgraded and replaced a hundred and thirteen. Uh, and the plan is that cameras that are under warranty will be serviced and cameras that are out of warranty will be replaced. New service and supporting equipment will also be installed and with university will replace up to two hundred and fifty cameras per year moving forward. Um, all maintenance access and new camera requests will be handled by LSU P D and then routed to the appropriate department of vendor uh for service. And also I T S is creating a help desk for cameras so we can submit work requests in a way much we do now. So that way we can speed up the process when the camera is down and make sure that we get it back in work in order. This map highlights our campus exterior lighting project. As you can see, the color code, uh, the, the dark green shows improved lighting over the past five years. Uh, that lighter shaded green is the, the improvements for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. The other lighting improvements are in the lighter green. And then the, the yellow shows the strategic capital plan that would happen for improvements over the next five to six years for lighting on the exterior of the campus. Some of our current renewed future initiatives that we want to look at as we continue to work to integrate our public safety and emergency operations on campus is a holistic approach to campus safety. We understand that campus safety is more than just policing. So comparing to other S E C universities, campus safety is an umbrella. It's comprised of campus police, emergency management, risk management, environmental health and safety facilities, and also a mental and behavior health component. So we want to systemize our public safety and emergency operation across the system. Um, to ensure that we're providing the most robust and using best practices in that effort. We also want to look at student safety ambassadors. I'll be working with the student body government to create these trusted agents. We know that students sometimes refrain from integrating or having encounters with law enforcement. So we want to create a group of trusted agents that students will be willing to give information to. And then those trusted agents can relay that information to our public safety partners. Looking at a reevaluation of our current deployment plan, which we've already done. But to reassess the current P D deployment plan in comparison to crime data to increase P D presence during the times when the most criminal activity is occurring. In addition to adding those uh non, those non-commissioned officers as I spoke about. We've already done some redeployment in our department efforts. We're now working twelve-hour shifts just to make sure we have more officers on the ground to respond. Uh, re, uh, looking at our mental health and awareness response, you know, limiting campus public safety engagement or identifying opportunities with partners or others to provide humane caring responses that may improve outcomes and reduce the likelihood. Um, escalation and preserve, and preserve LSU P D resources. Uh, we feel that some of the mental health calls, the police officer may not be the right person to respond. So we're working with our student health center, our Louisiana Department of Health and identifying other resources that could assist students when they're having a mental health or behavior health crisis. And it will not take a police officer off the street and make them unavailable from responding to calls. We also want to enhance our collaboration with the mayor's office. We want to designate a campus liaison to serve as the primary point of contact with campus public safety. We have regularly scheduled meetings, what we're doing right now, we're having the monthly meetings. But we also want to in be involved in joint training exercises and some patrols on campus from other those partner law enforcement agencies. We realize that ninety percent of the incident happens on campus come from external threats, which we cannot control. So the better we coordinate with our agencies that control the exterior of the campus, the better uh safety we can provide for our students in the interior of the campus. And also coordinating, developing, redoing, uh renewing and implementing the emergency response plans. We want to start incorporating our local and state partners in our emergency response plans. They were gonna be second up to any incident that happens on campus. So we want to make sure they're aware of what our plan is and they know where they fit, where their roles or responsibilities are within that plan. We also want to look at updating, increasing and leveraging our public safety infrastructure and technologies. As you mentioned, the lighting, as I mentioned, the lighting project will be part of that. And we also have the shield app that uh has many safety features such as emergency calls, real-time tracking, G P S. You can file the report. You can also, they also have an anonymous feature on that uh shield app. And also enhancing that lighting. This technology is an update to the blue light model that many universities previously used. Um, I hear Chief Thompson talks all the time about the blue light causes you to stop. You have to stop and make that call. Everyone has a smartphone in their hand. That's, that shield app will allow you to dial no one nine one one, keep moving and your GPS location will be tracked in real time. So no matter where you continue to move, we'll know where you are. Want to establish a university public safety and oversight committee that conduct reviews every six months or annually. The committee will review current plans and initiatives, measures assessed using our crime data, student, faculty and staff feedback and performance measures set by the committee. This committee will also give recommendations on new initiatives based on results and findings of the review. And these form of reviews will be conducted every six months on an annual basis. So as I stated, I thank you all for giving me a time to present our pa- campus safety and uh emergency operations today. Um, it's been a humble experience being here at LSU the past six months and I'm excited. And as I stated, I'm looking forward to ensuring LSU becomes a model of what public safety and emergency operations should look like for institutes of higher ed. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Antoine. Are there any? Are there any questions for Mr. Antoine?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the job that, that you're doing and all the employees to protect the, uh, the students at LSU. And I, I noticed that on the campus shuttle at after five P M. Is that published and is there a, uh, I'm sure it is published. There's a particular phone number that you would call or do you call the LSU police?
You could ask, so you could, there's a number to call, it's published on our website, but you could actually request it through the shield app. So we continue to encourage our student, faculty and staff to sign up on the shield app. You can request that campus shuttle from your shield app and it also tracks your location where you ought to be picked up.
Oh, good, alright. And on the uh campus exterior lighting upgrade, I see that uh in the middle of campus, there's a, the yellow strategic capital plan lighting improvement in the next to five, next five to six years. Uh, right on campus itself, is there any way to upgrade that uh anytime soon rather than in the next to five, six, uh, five to six years?
My still on, yeah, so, Mr. Morrow, the plan is to actually start those improvements sooner rather than later. It's all a matter of how much funding we receive in capital outlay and some deferred maintenance funds. So we highlight those yellow areas because they are a part of the um lighting study that was done back in twenty twenty that shows areas that need improvement. And we will continue to make those improvements in those areas as funds become available. So each year we will dedicate funding to improve the lighting in those areas. So it's the plan to continue that, but definitively how soon they come online will depend on the funding that's available. So as soon as we have funding that's either available, additional capital outlay dollars, funding from deferred maintenance. But then some of the funding that we expect to come back because the division of administration is funding the state lighting project improvements. We had some funding that was set aside in one of our funds for lighting that won't be used. We will deploy those funds to start in those yellow areas.
Hopefully, Mr. DeBilier is still here and he'll, he'll help us to with the funding.
Hopefully, my friend, Mr. DeBilier heard that we could use a little more money.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Do we have, this was a great presentation, by the way, Mr. Antoine, that was very complete. Do we have enough money? I don't know if you can answer this, this might be a Ms. Lewis question. Do we have enough money in our budget to run all of these operations? Do we have holes to fill or what are we missing?
We do have holes to fill and we are running the current operations, but to expand certain operations to add some of the additional officers that um Mr. Antoine spoke about. To get to the level of um police to student ratio that some other southeastern conference universities have or S R E B schools have. We would need additional funding. So we've been reallocating resources and prioritizing public safety this year and putting additional funds towards that. That was one of the priorities made in the budget that we presented to you back in August or July. That these would be priorities to add those additional officers. So we'll continue to do that. Also prioritizing spending on security cameras and lighting, that we continue to do that. But to be able to fund a lot of the um interior campus upgrades that need to happen. There would still need to be additional funds. We simply have had a lot of deferred maintenance and things of that nature. We all know that our deferred maintenance across the system is a billion dollars. I think one of the requests from LSU Unis for this year or for next year's budget includes money for campus security, emergency preparedness, campus safety, because those are needed at all of our campuses. So it's, it's a necessity everywhere. Dollars for campus safety, dollars for security cameras, dollars to increase emerging, emergency preparedness. Simply the dollars in the event there is a disaster to mitigate that disaster and return the campus to operations. Before um we would get any funding either from insurance or FEMA if it's a natural disaster that's declared, those kinds of things.
Well, I hope we can um try to fill those holes, if you will, in, in the budget. Cause you know, there's really nothing more important than this uh to make sure. So I'm hoping y'all can, you know, help identify what those things are if you haven't already to make sure that you have everything in your back pocket that you need uh for these initiatives. And you have a lot of future initiatives, things that, you know, I guess are on your wish list, but it sounds like these are things that you're gonna get done.
Yes.
Um, and the one thing I would highly encourage y'all to do is to also um uh spend some time and use the services of Crime Stoppers, which is a very worthwhile agency, been in the community for many, many years. And they're the one law enforcement entity, if you will, that touches all, you know, within an eight parish region. Obviously, um, I know the LSU P D works with, you know, the East Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office and all the surrounding parishes as well as um, you know, B R P D and the um Louisiana State Police. So Crime Stoppers is that one organization that brings all of those together, including um LSU P D. So they offer great services and there are a lot of, you know, things that are um free of charge, if you will, in terms of um marketing and advertising that can be done on the, on any of the LSU campuses. So I would just encourage y'all to do that and if you need help, I'm certainly happy to, hope you do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Uh, do y'all have an estimate of how much the lighting, additional lighting would cost along with the officers and the cameras? What's your immediate dollar amount that you need?
So we know that the starting salary for, for each police officer, both non-commissioned and commissioned, we have an estimate of those costs. We have the cost of the cameras and that, that has already covered the cameras. And the lighting upgrades um is an additional, I think, two million to start in the next area.
To, to do all of it, do you have any idea on the lighting?
Depends on how many officers we add per.
Just on the lighting, you have an idea just on to do the whole lighting project?
To do all of the lighting, I'd have to, I don't have the figure in front of me, but we do have the total cost of all the lighting. And I'm sure Tony will text me shortly to tell me that total cost.
Well, I, I agree that those are small dollars uh to provide that safety structure that we have throughout the, we went through this problem a year and a half ago. Just the self-confidence of the students walking through campus along with our employees. The dollars that we're gonna spend on that is gonna return tenfold. So we need to fight that money.
Yes, sir.
And I think Ms. Shaw is gonna attest to the benefit of our temporary lighting that we have. That's probably where she's headed.
Mr. Mallon and then Ms. Shaw.
Kim, and the estimate that we're asking the legislature, have we put those numbers in there too? Is that not being considered?
Yes, we have, the capital outlay request includes addition, deferred maintenance request.
Ask for the full amount of what you need to get this done, cause I think the legislature would approve that immediately.
Yes, we always request the full amount of what we, we need to get there.
Put that separately, there's no way they would reject that. There's no way.
So the, the lighting that's underway, um, the current lighting is being paid for by the state, our current lighting project.
No, but to fill this hole, what do you need? Now, I, I think the legislature, I don't think I know, would fund that separately from, from everything that you asked immediately. I mean, if we need the other amount that we asked for.
We will make a request for the lighting separately and the, the cameras were on the budget request last year. We're proceeding with cameras. That is the, the software and the servers, that's ongoing maintenance annually. So that is a part of the future budget request every year. And then salaries for police officers, that is an annual budget request item.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd like to help you get that money.
We certainly will.
Complete this.
Yeah, we just need to know the total amount.
We did request additional police officers in the budget. Sixteen million is the um total cost for all the lighting.
That was part of the, the total amount of money that when we, we had that.
The total cost of the lighting study that was done.
When you put the capital outlay numbers to us, where we, we needed a hundred, what, how many?
So our asking capital outlay is one sixty-one. But that's not, the total lighting plan is not in the capital outlay.
I think you need to go for the lighting plan by itself and leave, leave your, that is the money you need, let's fight for that. That would be approved by itself is what I'm suggesting. It's just a suggestion, but I believe we can get you that money, propose that gap real quick. Cause he's, he, I'm concerned about it and I think we need to really push it. I think the legislature will support it a hundred percent of that, do you have a question?
May I?
Oh, yes, yes Supervisor Shaw.
Um, I think this has been enough of a conversation statewide that absolutely the legislature would work with us going forward. But these gaps also have been, like Ms. Kim said, um, addressed by temporary portable lighting units that have been put on campus that are being moved as the lighting project takes place now. It's something I've gotten remarks from students, from parents, from social media, that they're very effective in the meantime. And they are a display of what the lighting project will look like once it's finished. Um, so I think that's a great temporary fix in addition to the long-term solution of more funding to fix the lighting plan. But I don't want, I don't want y'all to think that these are just looming dark spots that are present on campus because we are addressing them in the temporary. But the long-term is obviously a solution that needs to be addressed as well. Um, I had to ask as well about this map that's available here. Is there, is it publicly available anywhere else other than this board agenda or is it published on any website?
No.
No.
The, the lighting map?
Yeah.
So that lighting map was provided as part of the um
The student safety.
The student safety protocol. So I think it's available through communication, so I think it is out.
Perfect, I would love to get that public, cause I know it was emailed out to participants. But if we could get a shareable version of that, I think that would be great to assuage any concerns on the progress or what the timeline or where it's going.
Yes, I think there's a full, actually a full video, so I'll make sure that comms pulls that out.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. I, I think Mr. Brown has a quick comment and I'd like to make a comment.
If we could get, this could be public, I've had to call several parents. Try and, and I try to answer questions and, and talk to him, it'd be helpful, I think, if this could be. Uh, there are a lot of different pots of money, I understand, available to these, federal government pandemic related. Is, is anyone looking at to see if they're, they get funding for this lighting through, uh, through some of these pots and money that is coming down, I've been a lot of different, lots of dollars available. So I just suggest if, if someone want to look into potential grant or states, states or locals under the state. And the other question is, our question is, uh, on our other campuses, are we prioritizing your efforts on A and M campus with, with the other campuses so we can learn best practices? Share resources?
Absolutely, sir. That is the goal, to make sure that we create plans and
Absolutely, sir. That is the goal, to make sure that we create plans and policies across the system. So that way, our other campuses can adopt the plans that we're writing at the A and M campus, and it can be implemented throughout all the campuses within the system.
Could you, could you have, you know, committee, I think we may, maybe you'll have it together, collaborate, collaborate, like, sir?
Yeah, we do. We just had our last one on Wednesday. But we meet quarterly in that respect, to make sure that we're providing a systematic approach to our campus safety and emergency.
This is very impressive. I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Blasman?
One quick question. On the, on the document, on the map, are all the parts not lighted up or not highlighted? Those are good with lights. Is that how I'm reading that?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Those are
Mr. President? Highly lit.
Madam Chair, that's a wonderful presentation. I have a question about active shooters, which can ruin a university or anything else. In the presentations I've sat through, the philosophy that works best has to be that it's a matter of when, not a matter of it. Correct. Is that the way you look at it?
Absolutely.
Because it's going to happen?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's just when.
Mr. President?
Sir, I'd like to thank you and Ms. Lewis. I've been here for eighteen months, the last six months, for clarity around this particular issue as we become more transparent. And the holes, gaps, clear, strengths and assets, very clear. For the first time, even during a football game, I'm getting situational awareness. I don't think people really understand it. I don't get to go to a football game to have fun. It's a situational awareness deal for me. Your team has been excellent at consistent situational awareness updates for me. In every event that we have, this major, that was not happening prior to your arrival, prior to Ms. Lewis taking her role on. Quite frankly, we were flying by. I don't know if you all knew that, but that's the reality. When we're in the stadium, literally two of us are constantly on task for that, which can exactly go stop at any moment. Fortunately, you are here. Ms. Lewis understands the gravity of it, and you all have stepped up. I just want to say that in front of the board, that this is an outstanding team. And while we do have crime to manage, it's very, it never goes away. For people who think crime is going away, that's just insane. Unfortunately, evil people are constantly at work. But this group has done an excellent job, in my opinion, helping to bring us into a modern era, our best practices. And I really commend you. Your work is not done, there's a lot to do, but I'm very excited to party with you. Look forward to making sure we fulfill those gaps. I know if we get that money, Mr. Mallon, this group knows what to do.
Okay.
We're going to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Antoine? Thank you, Mr. Antoine, for that very detailed presentation. I join my colleagues in commending you, and what you do is vitally important to the safety and well-being of our students. So we appreciate all that you're doing to keep them safe and to continue to improve.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Okay, board members, you may recall, we circulated a notification for proposed amendment to the bylaws to merge two committees. At this time, I'll ask Dr. Kane to present the amendment.
Madam Chair, for the board's consideration today, is the proposed merging of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the Title IX and Access Compliance Committee. The new committee would be titled Inclusion, Civil Rights, and Title IX Committee. This change would mirror the recent restructuring of the Office of Inclusion, Civil Rights, and Title IX, to cover all forms of discrimination and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend the bylaws to merge these two committees. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Morris, seconded by Supervisor Mallon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. For our consideration today, our reports to the board for routine business items, the reports were previously provided electronically. Ms. Lewis is available if you have questions. Are there any questions at this time? I'll entertain a motion to receive these reports.
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. At this time, we will conduct President Tate's annual evaluation. The Board of Supervisors will meet an executive session pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 4217. Is there a motion to go into executive session for President Tate's evaluation?
So.
Any objection? Without objection, we will convene executive session. At this time, lunch will be served as well. So we will meet back here in about forty-five minutes? Thank you.
Supervisors, please follow, Javen.
Is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second. All right, moved by Supervisor Armenter, seconded by Supervisor Shaw. Any objection? Without objection, we are back in session. The board met in executive session to discuss Dr. Tate's performance. President Tate has been a champion for our students, faculty, staff, and the great state of Louisiana. He's raised a tremendous amount of money and just been an outstanding, outstanding professional. We're pleased to announce that the board has provided the president an exceptional review of his performance.
Can we clap?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. President, on an excellent first year. The faculty of staff advisors' reports are next on the agenda. Dr. Stumpf will present on behalf of the faculty advisors.
Hi, welcome to everyone. I'm Dr. Keston Stumpf. I'm from LSU A. I'm replacing here Dr. Kambo Chisange. He had to go for some family issues back home to India. He'll be back, but I'm here for today. Normally those reports are pretty short. It'll be a little bit longer this time. There's some important stuff I would like to discuss. Report from Baton Rouge E&amp;M campus. There's some concern about the admissions process where faculty feel excluded. So that's maybe something that need to be discussed with the faculty. They are also worried about the zero-based budget, which appears to be not well understood. And they're worried about unforeseen consequences. Some faculty members are unhappy with the relationship with a gambling organization, Caesars. Tuition remission on graduate students' dip pens. The way it looks like is a combination of students' tuition and that excellent fee. And I was told that the faculty has to pay not just the tuition, but also that excellent fee for the student. Some faculty think that the graduate student health insurance is unsustainable. I assume that means it's too high. That's the report briefly from E&amp;M. From Pennington, they're very happy that they rearranged their annual review policy. So they're happy with what happened there. They have a new policy for visiting scholars. And a new formal policy to promoting internal candidates from postdoc to faculty. And when I asked about what's happening there is I was told they have some swing movement. Sometimes they have more from external, because of course you have to apply for a position. And then they do take more internal people. And now they have a formal policy that makes sure that everyone is at the same level when they apply. And now they have a formal policy that makes sure that everyone is at the same level when they apply for that position. So they're really happy about that. The Ag Center, the search for director is continuing. And I'm sure Dr. Carell can tell you more about that. They have a review on the 23rd of January. And on February, there will be interviews with the candidates. Okay, so this is now LSU A, but it's not just LSU A, I think. Universities are told to operate like businesses. But think about, you are a business. And you have, let's say, eight, 10, 11% inflation. And there's no way for you to change the cost of your price or the price of your product. Instead, you have to go to the legislature. And they have to essentially enact a law for you to change the cost of your products. Now, ask yourself, which business would stand, still stand under those circumstances? Well, I can tell you, universities are still standing, because that's how we operate. But what is the price for this type of operation? We just saw that businesses pour a lot of money into various forms of, you know, university activities. So that they are competitive. But in many cases, salaries are not competitive. Or you get in a new faculty member with a competitive salary. But what happens to old faculty members? I can tell you, I've been at LSU A for 15 years. I'm a full professor there. We have a new faculty member coming in, and she's doing a tremendous job. I love her to death. I do everything to support her. She has my salary. And there's no way this can actually be changed, because we don't have enough money to do that. So there is a question here of fairness, of basic fairness, that I think needs to be raised. There was a little bit talk about turnover here. As far as I know, there is a lot of turnover in Louisiana universities, because they come here, look at the circumstances, and then they go to Florida. That happens to, or Texas or wherever, but they pay more. It's not true for everyone. Obviously, I love what I'm doing. I'm staying still here. But in many cases, professors then stay here essentially for family reasons or whatnot, what it might be. And that situation is not remedied. Let's say you want to change a lab fee or enact a lab fee. It's just a lab fee, right? Students have to pay a fee, because you have to pay vendors to get the materials. Guess what you have to do? You guessed correctly. You have to go to the legislature. They have to go through, I believe that has to be signed by the governor, for you to change a lab fee. This is not done in any other state, because everywhere else, they think that this is not workable. Something should happen. I know there's an election year coming up, but I think that shouldn't be as an excuse. And we really, we are trying to work with you guys to remedy that situation. Tuition or fee authority for universities, which we wouldn't be able to do anyway, that would have to go over you guys, the Board, would be one solution, or relatively significant increases in appropriations. And I know that's always a problem, how much money we get, that I understand that. If you are afraid that we'll just charge the students to the vazu and they can't afford it anymore. Believe me, LSU A will not price itself out of the marketplace, neither would you guys allow that. I know, talked to a student from Arkansas, guess why he is at LSU A? Of course, it is affordable, right? So we will not throw this away. But it is also a question of basic fairness. And support for the students and all the material that you need to support the students to remedy this situation. At LSU A, as far as I understand, Dr. Carell can correct me, 17% of students get tops? It's a little bit more in biology, I was told, but on average. So four-fifths of our students do not get tops. They're all working. They're having children. And no, we cannot be too expensive. They cannot afford that. Believe me, we will never do that. But something needs to be done. We need to be able to provide affordable STEM education in Sandler. And that means you have to have really good professors to teach it. We're planning a new nursing building, if I correct that, Dr. Carell. Well, those people also have to be sustained. And I know industry will give money, and it goes to certain areas, but it cannot just go to certain places. There's no point in having engineers, molecular biologists, medical personnel, if they cannot write or communicate in English. So we also need the best English faculty. I tell my students, and there are quite a few who go to medical school, there's not a single one who does not have an A in English. They do not exist. This correlates, and it's quite clear. And you need to have good faculty that is paid at a fair price. One small thing, I don't know, maybe some will disagree with that. This is a point of discussion. I do think that while not total amount of money, but percentage-wise, small universities need money a little bit more urgently than bigger universities. We generally do not get the big grants with 50% overheads. We don't, we get donations, but we don't get in the hundred millions of dollars. As we all have found out today, five millions for LSU A and M is nice, but it's still a small amount of money. For LSU A, it's 17% of its budget. So I'm here today to ask you to work with us. And I understand, we're not here in any form of competition or fighting, anything like that. We're here to work with you and cooperate to remedy this situation as much as it can be remedied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Stumpf.
I just want to point out something that I thought was fascinating in your remarks. And I was taking notes about it. And it actually is across campuses. So it's not as the unit changes, but it's a very interesting phenomenon. You spent a lot of time talking about faculty salaries, which I agree with you 100%. The current state of salaries is woefully underdeveloped. However, in your initial remarks, you talked about the budgeting strategy, which is zero-based budgeting. The budgeting strategy at LSU is a historical budgeting model. So it's an artifact of time gone by. It's where you continue to really just budget based upon whatever you did the previous year. If you continue to do that, you would never change faculty salaries. So there's only really one way to change the faculty salaries. It's one, you get an influx of new money, which is what you're proposing with the tuition.
Right.
Change, which we don't really control per se, but it's a great proposal. You either get new money, or you reallocate money. In a historical budgeting model, you cannot reallocate money, because it's just going to its historical slot. There's really only one way to reallocate money. What's the budgeting model called, where you can reallocate money?
Oh, I would assume that's your zero-budgeting.
Thank you, that's the point. So in the end, we have no choice. If we want to get faculty more salary, we have to simultaneously seek to get new money, while also using techniques and methodology in our own budgeting strategies, so that we might have access to a reallocation process that would allow us to do that. We all know that we have a real chance of getting faculty salaries increased this year through the state appropriations. Hopefully, they will do that. But we also know, looking at the revenue projections and the way taxes are going to work in the state, that in out-years, that would be difficult. So thus, it leaves one probable strategy to get to the place that you're describing, and that's actually a different budget model.
Are you not?
Is that fair?
You're not getting any criticism from me here. This is all logical and correct. I'm not criticizing you on that at all. I agree with you.
I just, I only bring it up in a public forum in this way, because I don't want anyone to ever get the impression that I or anybody in my administration is not an advocate of getting faculty better salaries, because we are 100% all-in. We want the best faculty, and we want the best-paid faculty who stay in Louisiana and ultimately, richly successful, because that's what's going to help the state. And I would ask every chancellor, if you asked them right now, they'll all tell you, the number-one thing they worry about, salary compression, not having enough to keep the very best people. And so deeply committed, and that might be my presidential report, because I don't know if I have anything else to say. But seriously, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, but we are all-in with you on this deal. I'm going to do everything I can personally to make sure people get more fair, equitable raises.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stumpf. Now Vice Chair of LSU Staff Senate will present on behalf of the Staff Advisors.
Thank you, my name is Courtney Frugé. I am Vice Chair of the Staff Senate here at LSU E. We welcome you. Thank you all for making the trek out here. One thing to start off with that kind of ties in with what Dr. Stumpf was saying is that we wanted to make sure that staff know that there is a working group that is looking into the zero-based budget. Our representative Tammy Milliken is on that group. So it's not just a few heads that are trying to make these decisions. There is input from all the different sides, and staff appreciates having a seat at that table, so thank you. Some of the highlights from our campuses, we'll start with Pennington. They would like to ask everyone to join them in welcoming Mr. Ernie Ballard to the Pennington program. They have scooched him over, and they were super excited about that. And he is their new Senior Director for Communications and Marketing. And so now with the loss of him, that means others will be looking, but we congratulate him on that move. Campus itself is digging deep into the holiday season with events for campus and the community, including cookie decorating contests, with proceeds going to the Greater Baton Rouge Food Bank. Their annual food drive for the food bank, which wraps up at the end of the year. They've got a Toys for Tod, door decorating contest, and a campus Christmas party through the support of their foundation coming up. And they're really looking forward to that. LSU Shreveport, this week hosted their holiday luncheon. They've had over 170 faculty and staff participating in activities and enjoyment with each other. They had Louisiana holiday trivia, they had games. And that event is also a chance for them to come in, highlight their outstanding service award winners. And we would like to congratulate, from the classified, Ms. Angela Burton, Mr. Jonathan Pascoe, and Stella McMillian. And if I said your name wrong, I apologize. From the unclassified, they have Meshah Small, Jerry Dupree, and Tracy Johnson over at the Law Center. They are currently as well in the midst of searches from professors to a dean of college. It's keeping them busy with candidates coming on to do tours and meet with prospective coworkers. And they're just trying to get through finals and rolling along, pushing those students through. But the work doesn't stop. They're also gearing up for the holiday luncheon and box decorating contests and all that holiday fun that brings everybody together. Moving to the Baton Rouge campus, this year's holiday bash on campus was a great success. They had over 300 participants, received a ton of great feedback, really enjoyed their time with Santa, and looking forward to next year. They did a really great candy gram sale. And again, these are fundraisers that support Staff Senate itself. And most of your Staff Senators provide things like scholarships, community outreach events, things that y'all don't necessarily see, but it just keeps our names in our communities and keeps the spotlight on the LSU system. The holiday door and box decorating contest is apparently getting very creative, as contestants are vying to win. They decorate either their door, or they decorate a box, fill it with food. And it's, I believe it's weight-based, so whoever brings in the most is winning the bragging rights. And all of that goes into the campus food bank. So it's for a great cause, and we really like that they continue that. Their next staff meeting will be on the 21st with a potluck for its conclusion. And they also had scholarships awarded at their last meeting. The undergraduate recipients were Emma Degropong in Information Technology Services, and Meredith Keating from the LSU College of Science. Their graduate recipients were Joshua James Alred, who works in the College of Agriculture, and Kyle Laverne, who works in the libraries. And finally, I'll finish with LSU E. So one of our favorite things that has come up is actually trunk-or-treat. It was our third annual one this year, and we had over, close to 200 volunteers at over 30 stations. And we welcomed over 1,700 people from the community and from the neighboring towns. It was just a wonderful two-and-a-half hours of mad frenzy of children on campus and families. And it just was an amazing thing to watch, and we hope one day y'all can come out and enjoy it too. As we continue to gear up for the rest of the holiday season, we've got our Christmas luncheon on the 20th. And we are in multiple Christmas parades, which is another fun outreach. The kids really love seeing Benny the Bingo out there. We put them on the fire truck. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it. If you've missed the fire truck, it is a spectacular little mini pumper that is LSU purple. And it's just, you can see it from a mile away, and they love it. We also had scholarship recipients for this fall semester. Ms. Amber Arno, who is Administrative Assistant to the Dean of Students, and her son Tanner Arno. So it was, that was a cool little dynamic to see, mother and child here, both going to school together, both better in their lives, and they won the scholarships. On the scholarship note, one thing that LSU E's campus recently voted on at our last meeting was to expand the eligibility requirements of our scholarships. So it's not just the employee and their child anymore. We expanded it so that that immediate family, that spouse, can also apply for it, which will help quite a few of our classified and unclassified folks on campus. And again, as a system, Staff Senate continues to work with Administration on fee exemptions for those staff members in the tuition exemption program. And we hope that you notice the theme of fellowship and community outreach in this report. And thank you for allowing us to take a moment of your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Frugé, for that report. That trunk-or-treat sounds like something that my son Trip would really enjoy. Okay, since the President has already provided his report.
That was a joke.
Okay. So if he does have more to say, now it's time for the President's report.
No, I just, I didn't want to let the money about the faculty salaries go by. It is definitely a priority, and I'll get to it in the middle of the report, but I just want people to understand, it is a complex issue that requires multiple strategies at one time, because you don't know really which one is going to hit. But you do control one thing, the way you budget. You don't control whether people give you money. And speaking of people giving you money, since our last Capitol campaign ended this summer, we, right after it ended, we received a gift from the William A. Brookshire Foundation for $7.575 million, which I'm extremely excited about. The gift has three purposes. To continue funding the Engineering S&amp;B Program, Engineers and Constructors Scholarship, which is a very special program that really encourages students to do internships while they're in school. One of our marquee scholarships at Baton Rouge. It also is going to fund the William A. Brookshire Veterans Law Clinic. And I'm very proud that we are investing in programming that is related to our veterans. That's very much tied to the Pentagon Strategy on the Defense side, as is the first scholarship being in engineering school. And the third part of the gift is going to support what we believe will become one of the premier pipeline scholarship programs in the United States. It's a program that will link our Baton Rouge Public School System to LSU's undergrads and link those undergrads to graduate students. And we're going to have a pipeline from people in the community, being mentored by students who are LSU undergrads from that community, who then they'll be mentored by graduate students at LSU. who then, they'll be mentored by graduate students at LSU. And the whole idea is to create this learning ecology where they all grow together, with an idea that in the end, we will have students who can matriculate all the way through to the PhD level and have a tremendous passion about staying in Louisiana and adding value to their community. So we're extremely excited about that program, and that gift is going to help lift that up. We already heard about Roy and Kathy Martin's generous donation. I want to continue to bring that up, because they've been so generous to us. And as we think about LSU Unis, one of my first experiences here was to go into the Science Building. And I don't know if the gentleman is here who helped you keep that Science Building going. See here? I saw him.
Dr. Curtis?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure he's okay.
Well, my first experience here was seeing some young people in a laboratory, working. And then he was racing around to make sure that the environment stayed sufficiently robust for them to complete the experiments. And they were doing undergraduate research. And it was, to me, that's when this campus really won my heart, because I love research. And I love the fact everybody was working together to make that research happen. I want to say that there is nothing that I won't do from my energy and leadership point of view to make sure you get that steam building. And we'll work with the legislature. And I'd also like to make a commitment in front of your community, Chancellor Sorenson, that on the philanthropic side, we've had some conversations, and I'm going to continue to press to get our friends to also be supportive from that side of the deal. So I hope to be here one day to see that steam building built right here on this campus, and really excited about that. And I wanted everybody here to know that. And then lastly, we have been doing tours, but more recently, we took one over Ag. And I think in our Ag program, and many people saw it, I'd just like to point out one professor. I saw many, many excellent folks in Ag and in our Natural Resources College. But there was a professor named Nathan Lord. I would encourage all folks on this Board of Supervisors and in the audience to just go look up his work. I was prepared, and I'm saying this publicly, when I saw he worked in taxonomy, I was thinking to myself, oh, this is going to be sort of a, you know, 1950s look at, you know, biology. And I was just not ready for what happened to me. Because this colleague was working on the color of insects and how they relate to metasurface. And it was, it was so state-of-the-art. It was beyond the problem space. If I was NSF Program Officer, I wouldn't know where to fund it from, because it was so cutting-edge in different places. And that's why I get up every morning. Because in the end, what really gets me excited about the job, and I know I've just been evaluated, but you might say, what gets you excited about the job? Seeing faculty members working in spaces like that, that you just wouldn't normally see. And having students involved in it, and them being a part of it, and really being able to apply that in multiple areas to change society, is what makes LSU so important and so valuable. So I end my report with a great thanks to you all on this Board of Supervisors for giving me the opportunity to be here, to work with faculty members like Professor Lord and others, because they are truly making a difference. And it's my honor to attempt to get the resources necessary so they can continue to do what they do. So thank you.
Thank you, President Tate. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all committee recommendations from today's committee meetings. Second, okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved without objection. Now we move to the Chairman's report. First, I'd like to give a special thank you to Chancellor Sorenson and team, your faculty, staff, and students. We're so excited to be here. You guys have really put on a great show for us today. We really appreciate it, been very hospitable. As you're aware, it's the 50th anniversary of Title IX in Women in Sports. As we reflect on the past, we look forward to the future. It's wonderful hearing from our LSU A. female athletes about their experiences. Additionally, I was humbled to participate in a video for the 50th anniversary of Title IX in Women in Sports called "Because of Her." I'd like to thank LSU Athletics for celebrating this momentous occasion, an important milestone, in such a special way. Last month, I had the privilege of addressing the cadets of the old war school and the privilege of joining them on the football field to honor our veterans. We're extremely grateful for their service and for the freedom and rights they fought so courageously to defend and protect. On behalf of the LSU Board of Supervisors, we thank them for their bravery, service, and sacrifice. I'd like to wish everyone a great holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second. Any objection? Without objection, we're adjourned.